Bienvenidos a mi opinión sobre la reunión supervisora de la ciudadanía Exeter llevada a cabo el 9 de marzo de 2020. La próxima reunión se llevará a cabo el 23 de marzo de 2020, nuevamente en el Redding Country Club. Hay un par de cosas que me gustaría discutir con todos. Mi opinión sobre lo que pasó en esta reunión y revelar información que tal vez no sepan o que no pueden ver desde el video que van a ver en breve. Antes de empezar, quiero hablar de una comunidad que tiene problemas con sus supervisores. No sé si leyeron en el periódico recientemente, los supervisores de Mating Creek han tenido algunos problemas. Comentaron el hecho de que incurrieron 120,000 dólares en impuestos legales en 2019. Bueno, casi me sonrojé cuando escuché eso porque, si no se dan cuenta, nosotros hemos incurrido en 2019 más de un millón de dólares en impuestos legales y el volumen de eso va a Fox y Rothschild. Cada caso de que representamos en ellos, perdimos cada uno de ellos. Además de eso, nos exigen por muchas, muchas cosas. La Junta y algunos de los supervisores, algunos de los supervisores en particular, me acusan de ser la causa de algunos de estos impuestos legales debido a mi solicitud de permiso. Bueno, aquí llegamos a descubrir que en lugar de usar paralegales, que son mucho, mucho más baratos que los abogados, Fox y Rothschild han estado enviando a sus abogados a revisar la solicitud de permiso y nos cobran 250 dólares por hora. Así que no siento que sea responsable de estos exorbitantes cargos. Me gustaría saber cómo se sienten al respecto. Y mucha de la información que obtengo sobre estas solicitudes de permiso la comparto con ustedes. Por ejemplo, la reciente solicitud de permiso que se cumplió sobre cuánto dinero gastamos para desarrollar ese sitio web futurista, como lo llama el Sr. Crusades, 60,000 dólares durante cuatro años. Ahora, mi sitio web cuesta menos de 500 dólares y fue desarrollado en menos de un mes. Así que comparen eso con lo que tenemos ahora mismo. Y mientras estoy en mi sitio web hablando de mi sitio web, exeterunited.com, si van a la barra llamada "Descubre", verán que hay enlaces que te llevan directamente a la agenda en el sitio web de la ciudadanía Exeter, directamente a los minutos en el sitio web de la ciudadanía Exeter y directamente a documentos, que espero que algunos de ustedes usen y vean los documentos que han publicado en el sitio web de la ciudadanía Exeter. Pero por favor, vayan a exeterunited.com, vean mis videos, dejen comentarios si quieren y eduquen a sí mismos sobre lo que está pasando en la ciudadanía y con nuestros supervisores. Así que buena suerte con los supervisores de Mating Creek. También tienen algunos ciudadanos que estaban reclamando que algunos de los supervisores, algunos de la conducta de los supervisores era no ser un supervisor. Bueno, hey, no tenemos nada de que bragar aquí en la ciudadanía Exeter. Hemos tenido supervisores que me acusaron de amenazar a los empleados de la ciudadanía, provenientes totalmente falsos. Hemos tenido supervisores que me llamaban nombres, me cerraban, me tiraban de reuniones. No muy buenos nuestros funcionarios electos, pero esto es lo que pasa cuando empiezan a revelar información que no quieren que sepan. Prefieren que no sepan nada sobre lo que está pasando detrás de las escenas. Y por eso estoy constantemente siendo atacado. Pueden ver los videos, por ejemplo, el video de la reunión de la ciudadanía, y soy el único que tiene ese video, no lo encontrarán en el sitio web de la ciudadanía Exeter, solo en exeterunited.com. Y podrán ver al Sr. Crusades llamándome un mentiroso cuando revelé que él es el tipo que quería venderlo al Redding Country Club y cerrarlo. Está en los minutos, el Sr. Bianconi motionó la cerración del campo de golf, el Sr. Crusades lo secondó. Solo fue salvado por el Sr. Spees, quien dijo que cubriría cualquier pérdida si lo manteníamos abierto. Así que sepan de cualquier actividad o cosas que vengan a votar sobre nuestros nuevos miembros de la Junta, nuestros nuevos supervisores, porque el Sr. Spees obviamente es muy sesgado. Va a favorecer el campo de golf sobre todo lo demás. Y esto en sí mismo es un problema porque tienes que tener opiniones y acciones dessesgadas que beneficien al público, no al Sr. Spees. Así que los ataques continuarán, supongo. También pueden ver en los videos donde me cortan, en la reunión de la ciudad donde esperan que se deje que todos digan su parte, verán video de el Sr. Spees y el Sr. Crusades me cortan o intentan cortarme porque no quieren que el público escuche lo que tengo que decir. Y espero que estén interesados, espero que investiguen las cosas y no tienen que estar de acuerdo conmigo, eso está bien. Pero lo que me gustaría hacer y estaría muy feliz si lo hicieran es determinar cuál es tu propia opinión basado en los hechos, pero asegúrense de obtener los hechos. El Sr. Crusades es muy bueno en decirles lo que quieran escuchar. Ha sido conocido, sabemos que es un mentiroso patológico. Muy poco de lo que sale de su boca es la verdad. Así que sepan de eso y actúen de acuerdo. Ahora, también quiero tocar este problema con el coronavirus, ¿de acuerdo? Nuestra ciudadanía está reaccionando muy lentamente con él, los supervisores no están actuando tan rápido como deberían. Parte de eso, tal vez no lo sepan, pero aparte de las reuniones que llevamos, el resto del tiempo, tres de nuestros supervisores generalmente están fuera de la ciudad. El Sr. Spees siempre está en Carolina del Sur, jugando el campo de golf, por supuesto. El Sr. Gaultier, ha estado conduciendo a Nebraska y ahora está en Carolina visitando a su padre enfermo y esperamos el mejor para él y su padre, pero estoy seguro de que también está escondiéndose en el campo de golf. Y luego el Sr. Staub, como vicepresidente de una empresa de hipotecas, está conduciendo por varios estados en el costado oeste aquí, visitando sus oficinas de ventas satélite. Así que no están en la área, no están aquí haciendo lo que están electos para hacer. Creo que a veces piensan que esto es un trabajo de parte de tiempo. Eso es lo que dice en la literatura sobre ser supervisor, pero esa literatura era de 20 a 30 años. Hoy es mucho más complejo ser supervisor de la ciudadanía y definitivamente no es un trabajo de parte de tiempo más. Y si lo tratan como un trabajo de parte de tiempo, este es el tipo de cosas que van a pasar, como lo que está sucediendo en nuestra comunidad ahora mismo. Así que esperemos que empiecen a darse cuenta, pero dudo mucho que lo hagan. Así que veremos qué pasa. Y luego, nuevamente, ahora llegando a esta reunión, la agenda fue entregada en la reunión y también estaba disponible el viernes antes de las reuniones del lunes. Y decidieron agregar un nuevo recordatorio sobre cómo comportarse en estas reuniones de la ciudadanía para el público. Y una vez más, nuestros supervisores y nuestro presidente, el Sr. David Spees, quiere recordarnos a ser civil y respetuosos. Se está volviendo más rígido ahora, solía ser tres minutos y tal vez te dejan ir más de tres minutos, pero el Sr. Spees ahora quiere que sean tres minutos o menos. Y nunca sea repetitivo, ese es el adivinamiento que hay en las instrucciones. Así que continúan limitando nuestra participación en estas reuniones y nuestra capacidad de comunicar los problemas que tenemos al Board. Simplemente no quieren escucharnos. Y espero que eso cambiará, pero no me quedaría con tu respiración en eso. Así que es bastante claro para mí que nuestros supervisores no son transparentes, aunque hicieron la promesa en la segunda reunión después de la reunión de la organización que una de sus prioridades principales era ser transparente. Pero no estamos viendo eso, se están volviendo menos transparentes. Y creo que siempre que escuchen ellos decir esa palabra, piensen lo opuesto a lo que están diciendo. No están cambiando dirección. Creo que los tres supervisores que elegimos, los elegimos con la esperanza de que veríamos una gran gana en el comportamiento de la Junta de Supervisors y la dirección que nos estaban guiando. Y esa dirección que nos estaban guiando fue desarrollar este plan de desarrollo económico y gastar mucho de los 50 millones que nos quedan. Y parece que todavía están en esa ruta hacia el desarrollo económico. Así que el viejo régimen sigue siendo encargado, con el Sr. Spees sorprendentemente. Me ocultó todo el año, realmente me engañó. Pensé que estaba con nosotros, hablaba conmigo como si lo fuera, pero ahora es muy claro que está en la cama con el viejo régimen. El Sr. Crusades está justo ahí junto a él y los dos han convencido, creo, a Joe y Greg a unirse a ellos. Porque verán su comportamiento, están en el camino, de hecho, es el club de los niños contra Michelle Kircher. Ella es la persona más experimentada en la Junta, 30 años en el gobierno, 12 años como supervisor de la ciudadanía Exeter y el resto del tiempo trabajando para el condado como secretario ejecutivo de uno de los comisioneros. Así que ella tiene una vasta cantidad de experiencia y conocimiento, pero el club de los niños hasta ahora parece que la está bloqueando. Le ha dado buenos consejos, pero no parece que estén tomando nada de ello. Y verán en varios votos que fueron tomados, ella es la única no votada. Y esto es un problema porque es el viejo régimen. Así que lo que esto también me dice, y sabemos, recientemente vimos a Vinnie Bianconi ir a la casa de Vander Lane porque estamos viendo todas estas cosas y probablemente está tomando un mensaje o obteniendo direcciones que luego le transmite a su amigo John Crusades. Así que creemos que Vander Lane y Granger todavía tienen sus dedos en esto, hay razones para eso. Sus vendedores, sus personas, sus asociados que han montado para hacer trabajo aquí todavía están aquí. Todavía están usando Simone Collins, todavía están usando, creo que es McMahon y varios otros asociados que todavía están haciendo negocios en la ciudadanía Exeter. Así que están muy vivos, los grupos especiales están esperando el comienzo del promenadre porque quieren obtener un pedazo de la acción. 50 millones, se les quita tal vez 10% de eso, eso es 5 millones de dólares en muchos bolsillos. Ya estamos excesivamente pagando a muchas personas que incluso trabajan en la ciudadanía, y lo veremos más tarde. Así que esa es la parte de eso. Quiero pasar esto tan rápido como puedo para que puedan ver el video. Así que un par de cosas sobre el viejo negocio. Hablaron de las operaciones de restaurantes del Redding Country Club. Y, oh Dios mío, ¿esto va a ser un asunto? Te lo diré. Estuve allí escuchando a ellos discutir esto y estoy confundido, realmente lo estoy. Y estoy preocupado por lo que va a pasar. No creo que veamos las operaciones de restaurantes o la banquet hall en funcionamiento por mucho tiempo. Mi sugerencia a ellos fue conseguir expertos allí para evaluar todas las facetas del edificio para averiguar qué requisitos existen para asegurarse de que esté actualizado y listo para abrir las puertas. De lo que entiendo, hay muchos problemas de seguridad, ciertamente los problemas de los handicap están allí. La cocina no parece estar en muy buena forma, la barra fue reconfigurada y no va a funcionar como funciona ahora mismo. Necesitan algunos elevadores para el primer y segundo piso. Necesitan agente tonto para mover el comida hacia el segundo piso, de lo contrario, los agente y las aguas van a caminar por los pasos llevando comida. Así que hay muchos problemas con el club de la patria que no nos están realmente diciendo, pero existen. Pero lo peor ahora mismo es que Greg parece estar liderando el cargo en el comité por esto y pensé que Michelle Kircher fue designada como el presidente. Con toda esa experiencia, piensan que la pondrían en cargo, pero el club de los niños ha decidido que un principal de la escuela secundaria sin experiencia en ninguna otra área va a estar en cargo de facilitar el revivir el negocio de la comida y la bebida y el banquet hall. Y una de las cosas que quiere hacer es que quiera ofrecer, solicitar propuestas de profesionales para ejecutar separadamente el restaurante y el negocio de la banca. Creo que esto es un error. Creo que en lugar de lidiar con dos personas diferentes de negocios, deberíamos tenerlo como un paquete. Y tiene mucho sentido. Si soy un tipo de restaurante y tengo el negocio de la comida y la bebida, voy a querer el negocio de la banquet porque es donde realmente voy a ganar mi dinero. Y si soy solo el tipo de banquet, no va a ser fácil para mí porque toda mi vida va a depender de llenar esos banquet halls. Y luego, ¿el tipo de restaurante cooperará conmigo? Así que hay muchos problemas que surgirían si lo hicieramos de esa manera. Es mucho más simple obtener un vendedor, un negocio allí para ejecutar ambos de ellos. Para mí tiene mucho sentido y es menos complicado para los supervisores en cuanto a gestionar las personas a las que leasingamos estas operaciones. Y creo que eso es lo que queremos hacer. No puedo vernos contratando a alguien para gestionar la instalación y luego nosotros gestionamos a ellos. Eso no ha funcionado en el pasado. Lo que necesitamos hacer es leasinglo con lo que se llama triple net lease. Y simplemente lo que eso significa es que quien leasinga la propiedad de nosotros pagarán los impuestos, pagarán cualquier reparación o mejoramiento de la leasing, pagarán por eso. Así que lo único que nos dan es un bonito flujo de ingresos, hacen una pago de leasing a nosotros. Digamos que es 50,000 dólares al mes o algo así. Y eso es todo, y entonces eso es todo, ellos ejecutan el negocio y nosotros solo colectamos el dinero. Así que espero que estén trabajando de esa manera, espero que entiendan el negocio. He estado en el negocio por más de 40 años, he propiedad de mi propio negocio, he trabajado para pequeñas, medias y grandes corporaciones y creo que tengo un poco más de experiencia que Greg o los otros supervisores en la Junta. Así que vean esto, creo que va a ser un real problema. Otro elemento bajo el viejo negocio es la ruta de acceso a Trout Run. Acordaron enviar solicitudes para construir esta ruta en Trout Run. Y francamente, creo que es innecesario en este momento porque Michelle Kircher llamó a una auditoría forense. Se la han ignorado. El director de finanzas afirma que no necesitamos una auditoría forense porque recibimos una auditoría anual. Bueno, una auditoría forense es mucho diferente, nos dice dónde está todo y qué pasó. Pero además de eso, este deseo de construir esta ruta, una de las excusas que dan es que, bueno, si hay una atracción de tráfico en la ruta, podríamos divertir parte del tráfico a través de esta ruta hacia Never Sink. ¿Qué es el gran problema? Lo giras en vez de gastar todo este dinero en una ruta. Pero todo lo que nuestros supervisores hacen, en la mayoría de los casos, especialmente cuando se trata de una gran cantidad de dinero y algunos grandes proyectos, hay una razón alternativa para ello. Y detrás de esta ruta está el plan de desarrollo económico y es un pequeño plan secreto que tienen, ¿de acuerdo? Solía tenerlo en Google, pudieron buscar el plan de redevolución de la ciudadanía Exeter. Solía tenerlo en el sitio web de la ciudadanía Exeter, ya no está allí. Se ha vuelto secreto porque lo exponía y explicé cómo iba a funcionar todo esto. Y si están interesados en ver el plan, está en mi sitio web, exeterunited.com. Pueden descargarlo, pueden verlo, tiene cerca de 74 páginas, algo así. Y solo pone todo el plan de lo que estos tipos están haciendo, lo que los grupos especiales quieren hacer. Y cuando vean lo que es, van a decir, oh Dios mío, ¿de acuerdo? Porque algunas de las cosas que quiere hacer ya están sucediendo, la base, la fundación de lo que quieren hacer ya ha estado trabajando. Necesitaban el promenadre, compraron eso. La siguiente fase fue, bueno, la primera fase fue vender la planta de tratamiento de la agua de basura para que pudieran obtener los fondos para desarrollar este programa de desarrollo económico. Así que tienen los fondos ahora, estuvieron exitosos en vender la planta, desafortunadamente para todos nosotros. Las siguientes fases fueron comprar el promenadre, vender los parcelos del club de la patria. Subdividieron al club de la patria en tres parcelas, venderlos a los desarrolladores, vender la propiedad de la administración actual, eso es parte del plan, y luego comprar los 120 o así acres de tierra de bosque justo junto a Trout Run por 1,6 millones de dólares. Está contaminado con carbón. Así que pueden construir, y esto es lo que la ruta es para, esta es parte del plan. La ruta tiene que ser construida para que puedan comenzar el desarrollo en la comunidad de la superficie de la ciudadanía Exeter. Y todo esto va a ser financiado por el dinero del contribuyente, la construcción básica de ello. Y luego todos estos otros desarrolladores van a venir y van a hacer una enorme carga de carros de dinero basado en nuestro dinero fiscal. No tienen que creerme, amigos, veanlo, vean lo que han estado haciendo. Así que la otra cosa que va a pasar, pueden ver en este video, es que la administración va a solicitar contrataciones para deshacer el edificio Radio Shack en Perkyomen Avenida. Supongo que muchos de ustedes no lo saben. Afirman que esto es parte del plan de desarrollo de la Perkyomen Avenida. Y no, me gusta algunas de las cosas que han hecho con la ruta, pero eso fue puntuado, pero algunas de estas otras cosas... Saben, he estado sentado en las reuniones por más de un año y medio ahora y lo que he visto son que los empresarios vienen y están reclamando sobre todo esto. No fueron parte del plan, la Junta solo decidió, Vander Lane y Granger y los asociados deciden que esto es lo que iban a hacer y nunca realmente solicitaron la entrada de los empresarios. Y no han estado felices con el proyecto por mucho tiempo. Pero vamos a gastar dinero para deshacer el edificio Radio Shack ahora. También aprobaron casi 30,000 dólares para leasing nuevas bicis de golf durante cuatro años. Esto fue cerrado, estabilizado el año pasado por Vander Lane y Crusades. No iban a dejar que Dave tenga sus nuevas bicis de golf. Pero, por supuesto, ahora que es el presidente de la Junta, este problema fluyó directamente a la aprobación completa. No sé si es 4 a 1 o 5, 5, oh, creo que podría haber sido 4 a 1. Pero aquí estamos, firmando una leasing de cuatro años en bicis de golf y no estamos seguros de quién va a dirigir el campo de golf el próximo año o el año después de eso. Nuevamente, no estoy seguro de que queramos ser el gerente del campo de golf. Deberíamos de leasingarlo a alguien que quiera operarlo. Y mi opinión sobre el campo de golf ha cambiado. Fui un verdadero apoyo al campo de golf hasta que empecé a ver lo que estos tipos quieren hacer y lo usan como su propio campo de golf personal. Saben, Dave puede salir de su puerta frontal y simplemente caminar a la calle de golf y empezar a jugar golf. Así que creo que en algún momento del tiempo podríamos convertir el campo de golf en Central Park. El campo de golf en su forma física actual nos cuesta 700,000 dólares al año para operar y mantener. Así que cuando hicieron un beneficio el año pasado de aproximadamente 20,000 dólares, eso significa que pudimos tener ingresos en 720,000 dólares, 20,000 dólares sobre nuestros gastos de operación. Pero si lo transformamos en un parque, tal vez, digamos, por ejemplo, nos costaría 100,000 dólares al año para operar como un parque. Eso significa que podemos reducir los gastos de operación de la ciudadanía Exeter por 600,000 dólares y todos pueden disfrutar del parque. Podríamos empezar inicialmente solo con mejorar esos puentes de caminata. Podemos rentar bicis si quieres conducir alrededor de ellos. Luego podemos trabajar en tener un área de juego realmente, realmente buena para los niños. Tomar parte de lo que era el rango de conducción y expandir el parque para que haya suficiente parque para los restaurantes. Creo que podemos tener un negocio realmente, realmente exitoso de comida y comida allí si somos inteligentes. Así que eso es lo que creo que es el defecto para el campo de golf. Creo que a largo plazo están planeando hacer más inversiones en el campo de golf. Estoy seguro de que necesitan al menos entre 500 y un millón de dólares en mejoramientos. ¿Deberíamos realmente hacer eso? Porque entonces de repente se vuelve muy caro. Al menos el negocio de comida y bebida y la banquet va a ser consistentemente un ganador de dinero. De acuerdo, así que quiero llegar básicamente al último tema que quiero hablar en el video y sé que voy continuando sobre cosas, pero algunos de los empleados han sido pidiendo que llenen para personas que ya no trabajan allí, que están haciendo estas cosas. Por ejemplo, Granger, él era el gerente, él era el dueño y él era el secretario. Así que ahora lo que están pidiendo a tres personas hacer, una persona para ser el secretario, una persona para ser el dueño y una persona para ser el gerente interno, ¿de acuerdo? Y lo que han hecho es que han otorgado, aprobado esto en esta reunión. El secretario, que en realidad es el director de comunicaciones para nosotros, Lori Getz, ella es un secretario y votaron para darle un extra de 300 dólares al mes. Ahora, tenemos los empleados más pagos en nuestro nivel de gestión que cualquier otra ciudadanía de segunda clase en la Comunidad de Berks. Estos salarios son equivalentes a la industria privada. Si saliste y trabajaste en una corporación privada, este es el tipo de dinero que harías. Y siempre he entendido que cuando entras en el servicio público, puedes ganar un poco menos que el sector privado, pero salgas un poco mejor del otro lado en beneficios médicos y de jubilación. Bueno, Lori, ¿de acuerdo?, ella gana por el salario de 2020, va a obtener 59,280 dólares por ser director de comunicaciones. Van a darle un extra de 300 dólares al mes para manejar algunos trabajos secretarios como cuidar, tomar los minutos en las reuniones. Así que ella está obteniendo un aumento del 6% después de obtener una aumento del 3% para 2020. Así que el otro es el dueño. Ahora, esta es Jen Savage, ella es el director de finanzas y le han dado el título de dueña. Y al final de 2019, le habían dado una bonificación de 3,482 dólares. Ahora van a darle un extra de 500 dólares al mes para ser el dueño. El dueño no hace mucho, realmente, quiero decir, su rol es minimal. Eso es un aumento del 8% para ella porque ella está ganando, su salario de 2020 va a ser 71,719 dólares al año más un anual de 500 dólares al mes. Así que estaba pagando, iba a ser pagada 5,976 dólares al mes, ahora obtendrá 6,476 dólares al mes con el aumento de 500 dólares. Y luego tenemos al gerente interno, Clarence Hamm, ¿de acuerdo? Creo que podríamos haber hecho mejores opciones allí. Estoy seguro de que Clarence es un tipo bueno, no lo conozco muy bien, es callado, no parece que quiera hablar en el micrófono, tal vez es tonto, tal vez simplemente no quiere ser grabado. Pero su salario de 2020 es 92,265 dólares. Así que como gerente interno, van a darle un extra de 1,000 dólares al mes, ¿de acuerdo? Así que eso equivale a 8,689 dólares al mes, obtiene un aumento del 13% en eso. Y espero que esto no va a durar mucho. Creo que el 20 de marzo es el límite para obtener los potenciales resumes de los gerentes y luego la Junta debería hacer... potential managers' resumes in, and then the board should make, uh, a decision sometime in early April, I would, I would expect, if they can get off the golf course, to make a decision. So, I think that we're paying these people too much money, way too much money, and this is really, it boils down to what's legal and what's ethical. It's legally, these supervisors can do this. But ethically, as far as managing the township, uh, finances, I think they've gone a little bit overboard. Uh, and I don't think the supervisors really know what the staff is doing. I've heard a lot of rumors about what's going on in there, and it's not good. So, with that said, these are my opinions. I encourage you to, uh, develop your own opinions based on maybe some of the things I say, based on some of the things that you might hear, read. Uh, do your, do your investigations and come to your own conclusions. And finally, I'll leave it, uh, this last note. Only on Exeter United can you find the videos for the last two meetings and the township, uh, town hall meeting on the Running Country Club. And I wanna remind you that, uh, I'm working for you. I'm trying to provide you with additional information discussing the issues that, uh, were discussed in the meetings and giving you an opportunity to know more about it through my videos. If you haven't been able to make the meeting, then you can see what's going on here. So, enjoy the video and stay safe. Thank you. Well, there's one, there's one last topic I wanna talk about. Our, our new board, as I mentioned, they think that there is, uh, that they are, uh, part-timers. And, uh, under the administration of John Crusaders, practically, nothing was accomplished, nothing was done. You know, standard, you know, routine issues were, were taken care of, but the issues that we expect them to deal with, uh, have been delayed and delayed and delayed. And I could, I'm gonna give you a list of some of these specific issues that have not been addressed, and they're just taking their good old time on this. A lot of old business. Number one, the noise ordinance. This thing is over a year old. And there are people living in the community here that have to deal with, uh, these, uh, dirt bike riders that are just making noise like crazy right next to their house. So that's one ordinance that's been delayed and delayed and delayed. And I believe the lawyers are Fox and Rothschild, they're making a lot of money writing this stuff up, creating, recreating the wheel, because noise, noise ordinance exists all over communities. This shouldn't be this difficult. Second one is the, uh, short-term rental ordinance. This is still up in the air, and this, this has been going on for a year or more. Then we have the Service Electric Agreement. They had a town hall meeting, or actually it was a real meeting, they wanted to dis- disguise it as a town hall meeting, but it was a real meeting. So, they got our input, but now they wanna have a second town hall meeting, and they still have not signed the agreement with Service Electric. They, they haven't held a town hall meeting on the promenade. And we know that they're going up there, they're doing things, uh, what's the plan? I don't know about you, but I'd like to know, how much is it going to cost us? What is their vision for what the promenade is going to look like with all these, uh, departments up there? Then there were two issues that I brought up, which they refused to address or answer. The missing podium, it's about a two thousand dollar oak podium, it's been there for years. Uh, I know the story on it now. They've had time to develop their own story, I'm sure they're gonna present it to us in their own good time. But this is a, this is an asset that belongs to the township, which means it belongs to you and me, and it's disappeared. They won't, they won't talk about it. Then the other one, which is just as important, if not more important, is the budget deficit. Our director of finance has came out numerous times in meetings telling us that we had a three point eight million dollar surplus. And I disagree with that number. In fact, I've stated many times, actually, the budget displays to us that there's a deficit. So that means they're actually using funds from the sale of the sewer plant to cover the deficit. Because we've run a deficit in, in our community now for fi- at least five years. Then, we have, uh, we had the forensic audit that they insisted on having, spending money for that, and they throw it up in our faces all the time. Well, in that forensic audit, it was identified by the auditor that the books and records were missing for the Running Country Club food and beverage business, the banquet business, and the golf course business. Where, what happened to those records? Why is there no investigation being performed to discover what happened to financial records? That they're responsible for protecting for our community. They need to be called upon to answer this. And there should be an investigation who, and find out who last had control of these books. So, there's, there's so many other things, uh, they talked about, uh, the Homestead, uh, uh, Act, which they initiated, which we have a deficit and we're still going to reduce our taxes according to them by eight hundred thousand dollars. So I don't know, does this make sense to you that we run a budget deficit and then we cut taxes by eight hundred thousand? This is why I say when they run through all of this and they run out of money, this is when the Exeter Township tax time bomb explodes. And everyone's gonna be wondering, why are my taxes going up so much? Hopefully you'll remember this video and think about that. Thank you.
Uh, announcements, we've got two late addition items which I will talk about. Uh, we're gonna do the update on the municipal tax bills. Uh, we also received a rest reservation, uh, which I will discuss right after that. And then, we're gonna have a brief, uh, announcement on, uh, Project Lincolnwood that we want to have on the agenda that's not going yet, so that's just for public information. So we'll start with that, and to do that before we talk about the comments, so update on the municipal tax bill.
Uh, so the municipal tax bills this year are slightly different, there are two bills being received by every property owner. One is for the county tax, and it's strictly county tax. The other bill includes all of the township taxes. The reason that we've had to change is because the county cannot accommodate a homestead exemption in their software system. They cannot accommodate having a different assessed value for county taxes versus township taxes. So if people are in the homestead exemption, they would not have been able to have their bills printed there. This is the first year that we transitioned, obviously. Uh, there, we were on target to get them out at the same time as the county bill this year, and unfortunately, the BCIU, and I'm not doing this to throw them under the bus, but they had a large software snafu the week that we were looking to print the bills, and it wasn't just affecting the Exeter bills, it was affecting everyone trying to print bills that week. So the printing was delayed, the bills were mailed last Friday, which was one week late, and they should have been received in people's mailboxes today approximately. So I know a lot of people received them today. Uh, if you have any questions, you can contact the township building or contact the tax collector, Charlie Diamond, his information is on the bill. Uh, both bills can be paid together, they can be paid separately. The, both bills should be submitted to your mortgage company if you do escrow. But you can consider them the same, it's just you can receive two pieces of paper instead of one. Questions?
Do you, do you know, um, the escrows? Cause normally those are, they're already in the system.
Electronically?
Yeah, they're electronic.
Yes, this county was gonna handle it just like the county did, so they're in communication with the largest escrow companies, the largest mortgage companies to do that electronic processing file. So, I always recommend people, if you're doing escrow of your taxes, that when you get the bill, call your company, send them an email, go in the portal, whatever the method is, to make sure that you do receive it. You know, it's like your electric bill, you're responsible for it whether they receive it or not.
I would recommend if we could put something on the website that if anyone does have any questions about the escrows, that they reach out to their lenders.
Okay.
Because my concern is gonna be, it's already set in there, at the end of the year when you do the escrow analysis, the folks may get the refund, they'll get it, and then if there's a change, then it can kinda swing back. So if we can just put some information, if you, when you get your escrow statement, make sure you reach out to your lender.
We do have that on the website, and it's gonna be in the newsletter, which is dropping very shortly as well, um, to make sure that you do contact your mortgage companies, make sure they receive both bills.
I'm just saying though, in December when they do the analysis, that's why they're gonna end up being refunds and stuff, it could be a mess, so, we may just wanna keep something on there.
Okay, sounds good. Any other questions?
Question?
Two questions, um, and your name is?
Jen Crisavage.
Are you a township?
I'm the finance director.
I'm sorry?
Finance director?
Thank you. My question is, um, I did receive my second bill today, was substantially less than last year's, which is great, but is that, I didn't know that rates were changing.
That would mean that you're in the homestead exemption program.
I am, but did that change the way they did that?
No, we never had a homestead exemption before, only the school district did. So this is the first year that we have, that township has, there's no other township in Berks County that has homestead exemption, we were the first one to do it.
It's had for years.
The school district has had it for years, the township has never had. So in conjunction with the wastewater plants, what the township has done to give back to its property owners and residents is we did a homestead exemption, so the first fifty thousand dollars of your assessed value has been exempted, so you're not paying tax on that first fifty thousand dollars. So if you have a house that is assessed for over fifty thousand dollars, you're saving like a hundred and seventy dollars per year through that homestead exemption, and this is the first year for it.
Wonderful, I was surprised to even know it was changing, is this in previous meetings or?
It's in our newsletter, it was on the front page of the newsletter, we explained.
Is that a newsletter we already have?
Yeah, I think it was maybe two newsletters ago, one.
Thank you.
Yes.
And you have to apply for it to get it though?
If you are in the school district program, you're automatically in our program. So the homestead exemption, you have to, it has to be a primary residence. It can't be a secondary residence, and it can't be a rental program, it has to be a primary residence. If you're already in the school district program, you're automatically in our program.
Yeah, you're in the qualification.
Correct, and the county does the qualifications.
Uh, ma'am, name and address?
Carol Bybee. Thirty, please, thirty-fourth.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, we received a reservation.
Director Riley.
Oh.
Uh, those, uh, where is the homestead, the money to cover the, the reduction in taxes come from?
We've balanced the budget that we can accommodate the, the reduction in taxes. There is money coming from the interest income from the wastewater plants, and from, also from sewer funds for people continuing to pay their, their backhaul of sewer bills.
Okay, is this gonna happen every year?
The, the plan is to have that every year.
More than, yeah, the office is more, you have to be in every year, I believe. We'd be smart to do it every year, but we see.
But where, where will the fund, and you say the funds now, the people that have?
There's also debts that was paid off with the wastewater plant, which reduces the expenses in the general fund. So what we've done with part of the wastewater proceeds is pay off debt. We've done deposits into pension plans, which are going to reduce our pension expenses in the future. So over the next couple of years, we're going to reduce the expenses in the general fund, which will alleviate debt relief, expense relief, so that the revenues continue to cover, we don't have taxing prices.
Okay.
Thank you.
What about, you know, what's the being ignored is that we're gonna be paying substantially more, more, so.
But you would have been, you would have been, yeah. So now we're gonna move on. Yes, sir. We received a reservation letter from our interim township manager, Michelle Gilbert, she had another career opportunity and she has moved on. Uh, we have to make a motion to accept, uh, her resignation. Make a motion to accept the resignation of Michelle Gilbert.
Uh, seconded.
Any further discussion? Call us in favor? Aye, 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 opposed? Aye, pate. Uh, we will, in addition to the agenda item, I think we'll move that down under new business at the beginning, discuss or deliberate on where we're going, or you wanna do the? I would recommend doing a new business. A new business, so we'll, we'll address, uh, the succession plan for that role in our new business. Uh, one other addition to the items, uh, to the agenda, we have an opportunity, we have a, a figure that are here to talk about an upcoming project called Lincoln, Lincolnwood. Uh, it's just gonna give us a very brief overview of what we can expect to see come in the future, I believe.
Correct.
General?
Planning Commission meeting.
Good luck.
At our February Planning Commission meeting, HRG, Huber Roller, and Brewing Engineers, uh, attended a meeting to present the Planning Commission with a sketch plan. This was an informal submission for discussion purposes and should receive feedback from the Planning Commission as well as our office, we did produce a review letter, there's some concerns, and they were sort of discussed at the Planning Commission. At that meeting, the Planning Commission suggested that the applicant would appear at the Board of Supervisors meeting in advance or in a similar type of fashion, where they would present the plans in a very informal, um, setting. However, in the future, they will need to get a conditional use from the Board of Supervisors. However, were not at that point, the Planning Commission would have preferred that they do, uh, appear in front of the Board of Supervisors to receive any comments or, or any questions, and just a more or less overview of the project, um, just to kinda scratch the surface, so the board is aware that this is forthcoming in the future.
Yeah, my name is Bill Swanick with HRG. Um, Joe's correct, we were at the last Planning Commission meeting, we received some feedback from those folks. I don't wanna take a lot of your time tonight, just because we've worked, we've been working on you. Bill Swanick with HRG, uh, here to represent the expansion project for Lincolnwood. Can I bridge the? And again, tonight, I don't expect any major feedback, since this is the first time we try seeing, we can certainly come to another meeting, uh, to, to talk about it a little bit more. Um, and again, pricing rules for the audience as well at that meeting. Um, just very briefly, the Lincolnwood development is along the east side of Lincolnwood, uh, Lincoln Road, um, just south of the Walmart, uh, shopping center. And they've got about thirty-five to forty acres of open ground, vacant property to the rear of their existing development. That's the gray shaded area that you see on the sketch plan. So we're basically just looking to expand the, um, the manufactured home community there. There are some stop streets already in the development that we would extend into that wooded area, uh, to increase the number of homes. Currently, there's a, there's about a hundred and seventy homes in Lincolnwood. This expansion would add about one hundred homes plus or minus. Uh, we have been working with Joe on some more technical comments. Traffic, we're looking into, we know that we need to detail traffic concerns. Uh, also, the tree survey came up after talking with Will Burger. We're in the process of performing that formal tree survey, uh, as well as boundary topo surveys of the entire property. And provide greater detail on future submissions and then final plans. Spot on, we know that we've gotta come through, uh, the process again for conditional use. So this is really, like I said, just trying to, to touch base with the, the board, see if there's any other areas of concern that didn't come up during the Planning Commission. That's really the extent of the present. That's really the extent of the presentation. Not full well if I need to come back, more than willing and able to do that.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments from the board? I think the purpose here is just to make everyone aware of this, that it will be an upcoming agenda, so you're going to be talking about it.
And a lot more detail coming as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Public comments. Dorothy, Mrs. Riley.
It's hard to see here. I tend to print this out so that I can do it quicker. So forgive me for reading. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I need to preface my comments with two points. First of all, coming to these meetings is not my idea of a good time. And I shouldn't have to be here at all. I didn't run for office, nor do I get any compensation. The residents should not have to watch everything you supervisors do, as was suggested by Greg. One would expect that as our representatives, you would be taking actions that are in our best interest. And I can only hope that soon trust can be restored enough that we can believe that you are doing just that. Second, I found a notice at the top of the agenda, which again is very hard to find on the website. "Admonishing the residents to obey the rules when attending and speaking at township meetings adversarial rather than welcoming." And I saw it up here when we came in. "How about instead you tell us how you will behave and treat the taxpaying residents with honesty and openness?" Tomorrow night is the first golf committee meeting, and it was my understanding after the town hall and the last supervisors meeting that the decision was made to try to get a good company to lease the golf course, either including the building or just the golf course, and find someone else to take over the restaurant and event venue. It was also my understanding that if it was said that down the road, you couldn't find someone to take over the golf course, it would remain as green space rather than be developed. But that was not the first, at least my understanding, that was not the first suggestion, that it just remained green space. Am I correct? Any answer? When you discussed it last time, it was decided it would remain a golf course and only be a green space if you could not find somebody to do the golf course. Am I wrong?
We were at the meeting, and you were there. It's a green space, green space. No development.
Very correct. Mr. Cusadis, who oddly volunteered to be on the golf committee, even though he made it clear more than once that he wanted that land developed, has been very busy on social media and is stewing the decision by the board to first try to have it remain a golf course. And he and his sycophants might try to undermine the original intent of this committee. Here is what he posted. Quote, "Reminder, it is a green space for all to enjoy, not a select few. Golf committee will help determine our options for green space like pavilions, tennis court, pool, walking and bike trails. Come be a part of it."
That's very true.
Just thought you should be forewarned that he has his own agenda.
Green space.
That wasn't the decision. He was also on the Exeter informant page on Facebook, making his usual disparaging comments about previous boards and never taking responsibility for the debacles that took place during his tenure.
Mrs. Riley, just to brief you that we're at a three-minute point here. We got to be fair.
Four minutes actually.
I only have a few, a couple more sentences.
Please, please wrap it up.
I'm trying to speak as quickly as I can.
Go ahead, keep going.
Is the comment that he made on Exeter informant that the quote DA is investigating the misappropriation of funds that occurred from previous board, over $2.8 million. Is that accurate, that the DA is doing that? I would like to know that.
It's in the minutes.
But let me finish first. It seems that it might be more appropriate for the DA to be looking into the actions taken by the board that preceded this one. I would also like to clarify that it was not a misappropriation, quote, but some of the funds were misapplied. And the vote taken, excuse me, by the board at the time was done only after the solicitor told them that it was the proper use of the funds. Mr. Cusadis has also made many comments that point specifically to Supervisor Michelle Kircher as the culprit who misappropriated those funds. And I very much hope that the other members of the board will put an end to these character assassinations.
It's in the minutes.
What?
The DA, we approved that in orange, so yes. Your answer is yes.
Well, then we should get a hold of the DA for the last four.
And just for the future, I think, you know, we have, I want to make a comment about the format of the agenda here. We put the rules up front because we want to make sure we're fair to everybody. And respect goes both ways. So we want to review those. And multiple people have come to these meetings before and said they were not aware of the rules. We got to be fair, we stick to a three-minute time limit. And also, I think the purpose of public comment is to address the board as a whole. Not individuals or speakers. I mean, I think the board will vote and make decisions as a board. You know, singling people out is not always appropriate if they vote one way or another. But I don't know if any other board members have a comment or.
Speaking of social media.
Excuse me, that's outside of here. But any other?
Move on for now? I would say move on for now.
We'll move on for now, we'll talk about that later. Bill Swanick? Oh, very good, Lincoln Woods gets a round. David Hughes?
Okay, there's a couple of things I want to talk about that's on the agenda. First one is old business, the RCC. I think before you send out RFPs, you need to evaluate the capital requirements of this building. As you all know, last year, the results of the RFQs were people coming in and saying, "Too much to invest in, it's too capital intensive." So we should know before we go out and try to get someone to run this, what our capital expenses are looking like. And then negotiate with them. Maybe we can get them to do them at less than the prevailing wage, and we can reimburse them and look for a triple net lease from all this. Also, on the issue of stipends. The IRS has a definition, and they handle stipends very specifically. So if you use stipends to need bonus or some other payment, that is, the stipends would be off of the W-2. They would not, you would not be required to hold medical, Medicare, or Social Security from those. And you can't have an employee have both of those. So, by the way, I'm opposing the stipend. I think our, rather, I wish you'd pay attention to me, David, directing my comments to you. I wish that we would reconsider the stipend because we have employees that are very, very well paid, the best in the county. And the last thing I want to say, and I still have a minute twenty left, is I support some of the things that Dorothy said. You want us to be civil. I think over the last year and a half that I've been here, the public has been very civil to you. It's actually been the other way around. You say you're going to run the meeting with Robert's most orders. That being stated, that when no one speaks until you recognize them. You are the chairman. And you have a supervisor who continually interrupts people, sends out comments after and says something that he doesn't agree with. And I hope that at least on this one item, that you will enforce your role as chairman, that they only speak when you recognize them. That's fair. And we don't really need comments, uncivil comments from the supervisors. And I hope you'll take your own advice on what you're asking us to do. You do the same. That's all my comments.
Very good, okay. Regular approvals, minutes. Type up here, it's actually February 24, 2020, minutes. I'm making a motion to approve the minutes from February 24, 2020. Second. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye, aye.
Opposed because of the.
Excuse me, if you don't speak into those mics, because I still know the mics from the old meeting room, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? I'm sorry. Because of the, I just had it wrong. When we spoke about the mom's pizza going in, it says that I said that I think that the restaurant will cause additional traffic. And I didn't get a chance to look at the video that was out. I know I had talked about that I didn't think it was a blighted area. But if we just hold those until I get a chance to listen to the tape.
I thought we did not have a good recording of that meeting.
It's hard to hear you guys.
We did not have a recording of that meeting.
Well, I did say that it would cause additional traffic because if it's in a lurka, it's because it's a blighted area.
Would you like to amend your comment now that it could be approved with the amendment?
Well, then I would like to amend it to say I'm opposed because I, she thinks that the restaurant is not in a blighted area to fit the definition of a lurka.
So we have a motion for a motion, a second, and a new second. Would you, would you, I'll amend my motion, because that would need to be amended.
It's up to you guys, who made the motion?
I think you did.
It's been second, and you could have all voted on the motion, or you can draw your motion and amend it.
I will draw my motion. And amend it with the correction. So now I made a motion to approve in February.
Can't hear you, Greg, could you use your mic?
February 24, minutes, with the correction from Michelle Kircher about the lurka. And what was the reason? Because it's not a blighted area.
Because it's not a blighted area. And you can just cross out the third line, where it says that it's cathy white, so it would be extensively reviewed. That would never happen.
So your motion is to approve the minutes subject to those, and subject to the two edits?
To the two.
Yes, according to the two edits.
That's a great, very good.
I'll second again.
Yeah.
I'll second the revision to the motion.
Blighted area, niscible.
Any further discussion? Just give them that again. All is in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? Ayes had. Disbursements? I'll make a motion to approve the disbursements of David, uh, 24, 2020. Second. Any further discussion on the disbursements?
Yeah, Jen. Jen had a comment on a couple of checks, the Teamsters, Delaware Valley Health, City of Reading, and also to attorney Ray Nambas, as well as Scott. So there's some checks on there, so I'm going to talk about them. Thank you.
Sure, there was a Central PA Teamsters bill in the amount of $32,855, and a Delaware Valley Health Trust bill in the amount of $129,000 approximately. They are monthly health insurance bills, and medical, dental, vision, prescription. Teamsters, of course, for the Teamsters employees. The Delaware Valley Health Trust is for the police and the administration. Uh, City of Reading, there was two payments. One was larger, about a little under $6,000. The other one was small, I think $165. That is for training, the Reading Police Academy, for our newest police recruit, Frank Santiago, for his training. And then this one was for a uniform purchase that we had to make for the academy. Uh, the Fox Ross Child Bill, about approximately $58,000. It was for December of 2019. Uh, there was charges on there that's still related to the JMH settlement, because that settlement was done in December. So there was still some significant charges on there for that. There was charges for right-to-know requests and general advice. The other charges were fairly small. Uh, there was also a charge, an invoice for Scott's extra car care, the amount of $5,700 approximately, for car wash stickers. That is an annual bill that we pay for annual stickers to get some of the township vehicles washed and keep them plently, mainly the police vehicles and some of the administration vehicles, clearance vehicles, people that are in the public's eye that have vehicles to keep them tidy. And we do get a lot of discounts from the Scottish.
A lot, there's a lot of vehicles. Yeah.
Yeah, we have probably 30 police vehicles. And also.
I know there were some questions on the disbursements. I know for the, we have a couple of versions of this, Jen. I mean, the one's pretty lengthy, where we showed the bond. And there's a little more promoting information on the one version. I think, yes, we could, you know, post that, maybe that would answer more questions. There's a little more detail on the one than the other.
The description is on one of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could look at which one we want to post.
That might answer some of the questions, just a little more detail on that. I don't know about the rest of the board. We see both versions and can usually figure it out from the combination.
We only have like 30 characters, I think it is for the description. So unfortunately, some of them may not be even described by that.
Very good, thank you. We had a first and a second, any further discussions with disbursements? All is in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? Ayes had. Old business discussion of Reading Country Club restaurant operations. I think I'll turn this over to the committee that's been working on this. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that it really isn't a committee. It's just Michelle and I at this point. We met with Derek and took a tour of the facility. And we kind of came to the conclusion we should keep all our options open, which would be possibility of having a restaurant downstairs, someone else managing banquet operations upstairs, or someone that would do both. And I'm new to government, but we need the RFP to move forward. So we're recommending that we get that process started. The community has made it very clear that we want to get restaurants downstairs. What we'd like to do is get that process started and then start forming a community, a committee of interested people so we can discuss the different options. The other option, of course, is we have the RFP, which would be someone to do everything. We've already approved that. We don't want to limit ourselves to just that. You're looking for a modification, so. Or an additional option.
I think additions are the only options. And Chef, Greg, that was here, has also reached out to me. He's interested in helping you guys out. So I'll get that through to you.
So how would you, how would, you and Michelle, I guess, on the committee, how would you propose we prepare the RFP and get it out there? Well, I don't know how that happens. Who is the solicitor who writes our RFPs? Like we wrote. It depends. I mean, like Larry Hirsch, Gulf River Analyst, put together a proposal for us to kind of go out and do that. But he, he also said he doesn't write our RFPs. Right, he calls people, yeah. It's a different. So we have a formal process we have to follow, correct? So what I'm saying is, let's get that process in the works because it seems to take quite a while to get that going.
We could possibly contact some of the cooking schools that are down culinary arts, that maybe we could get some advice from them on how we could go about this. Or maybe they could come up and even look at it to seek it, give us some ideas on what. give us some ideas on what to do.
Michelle, what about the chamber idea you had last year?
Pardon?
The chamber idea, did you talk to them? That's not an option. Greg, the first chamber.
Okay, all right, we could bring, there was this chef that came in before...
Could you speak into the mic, please? Can't, we can't hear you.
The che- the chef that was in before, we could bring up and have him look over it, give us some ideas.
Who, who writes, who's writing the RFP for the whole property, right?
No one.
But did we, did we...
We authorized it, we didn't decide who was gonna do that, we have a proposal from Golf Property Analyst.
Okay, and that's what I'm trying to figure out while you're working.
I've got a question maybe about that while we're discussing this, so obviously, we've done this in the past. You know, since we took over this property, um, you know, obviously, there was a process that was followed to bring in, Billy Casper Golf, and then whatever, A and M Golf, and then, you know, when Viva took over the clubhouse, there was a process that was followed, and obviously, we had advertisements or RFPs at that time. Can we get those passed ones that we can build on? So, I think that might be a starting point.
You also, you also want to decide how you're gonna structure the restaurant, you know, is the restaurant, you know, is, right now, Derek is the, uh...
Can't hear you, sir, could you speak into the mic, please?
Derek, Derek Singrider is the licensed person who is responsible for the liquor sales there, so you're gonna have to, if you're not going to have him be that person, that's gonna dictate how you do it, if you're gonna have him be that person, then that changes the way you do it. There's certain regulatory requirements you're gonna have to comply with, so you're gonna have to decide who's gonna be responsible for the sale of liquor. Once you make that decision, then you can decide how you wanna, uh, go out to, or you could, if you wanna get some guidance from the consultant that you're brought up and saying, you know, he could give you some guidance in there.
So, so we can't do that, this, this is what I would like to see happen, tell me if we can do this. I would like to send out request for proposal for running downstairs as a restaurant. I'd like to see a request for proposal for running upstairs banquet facility. I would like to see a request for proposal for running both.
You, you could, what you would do is do alternate, uh, I don't wanna call it bidding, uh, alternate proposals, where you would ask for there to be, I suppose you could ask them to give you, what would it look like if, um, this weren't a management relationship or the township were charged with the responsibility for the sale of liquor? Uh, or in the interim, what would it look like if, uh, you allow, if this is what you want, what would it do about whoever the proprietor was to be in charge of that? So, you could do it that way, you could just, you could ask for multiple different...
Because I don't wanna make a decision on what I think is best, or I see what the quote... I mean, I, I think one, one, one thing that has occurred here is sometimes you've had restaurant people who might not be as good with the, the banquet and so forth, but it was all lumped into one group. Maybe there would be one group that would be really good for the upstairs, and another group that would be really good for the downstairs. Like, I don't wanna limit us, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I'd like to see you go that way.
That's many different proposals, and then we take a look at and figure out what's best.
Can I, my suggestion would be, I think we had another outfit from Philadelphia area around this area that basically does something similar to Golf Property Analyst, that they work with, uh, different municipalities and, and clubs to bring in different functions and help them advertise and bring those people in. I would suggest maybe a conversation with either, you know, one with Golf Property Analyst, one with that party, get the ideas of how to move forward with that.
You also have properties like Springfield Country Club, you know, that does something similar. You could, there are other municipalities you could speak to about the process that they use and follow that, if it works, to get ideas as to what they've done.
Uh, and I think a word being better to talk to a chef, because we have one kitchen and two levels, perhaps if they work together, that's the most important thing.
He actually wants, he wants to come do a tour, I sent up Derek, I think he'd be a golfer. You just need to work through, and he works as a... He's telling you, yeah, he consults and helps to go, um, he wants to just look at the place, that's all, no cost, no, no obligation to us.
Okay, so in order to proceed, what you're saying we need to do is to contact some people from other municipalities. I just don't, I, I want, you, I just don't wanna go another two weeks and not get anywhere with this. If I, I, I've learned the big C tend to move slower than I'm used to, which I'm, I'm adjusting to, but let, let's hit another step tonight. Whatever, whatever it needs to be, I'm fine, I, I know we don't, I mean, we're gonna be life and staff, if I need to contact places, I'll be glad to do it, I just wanna make sure we keep moving forward.
So, what you're, what you're saying is you know what we want the RFP to do, you just want someone to prepare?
I think he's saying he wants every option covered, so he's gonna have, and you can do that, it's, I mean, with the challenge, you're gonna get the proposers, sometimes you go to them with too many options, they say it's just, it's just too much, I mean, we wanna be, we wanna, we wanna propose on something more specific, but it's not uncommon to have a proposal package go out that has multiple options for, uh, for what you would do in this scenario, or scenario A, scenario B, et cetera. You can do that.
I mean, could it be one proposal that says for first floor, second floor, or all, or the above? And just, that your proposal?
Scenario A, scenario B, scenario C, or you could, you could, if what you're saying is, could one scenario be the, the entire building, the entire operation? Yes, could the next scenario be, give me, you're operating the banquet facility only? Yes, C, give me a proposal for operating the restaurant? You could do that, but, you know, some people may not wanna fill out the entire proposal.
And that's what I think Mr. Hirsch suggested last November, is like, look at, include everything, and then get your options together and decide, but he didn't necessarily describe how to go forward with that proposal.
So, you could write it up, you can have a consultant come in, it's up to you guys how you wanna, or a chef, you know, slash consultant, have them both come in, or you can write it up now, it's entirely up to you guys how you wanna proceed.
Good, but if it was simple as any or all food, beverage, and banquet operations for the Reading Country Club?
My, my only concern with that would be, would they understand what we're looking for? Like, we're looking for someone for upstairs, someone for downstairs, or someone for both?
Yeah, I think there's an opportunity in that sentence, some people have not been thinking it's only all or nothing.
I think some of them... Says any or all, but, um, what if, again, I'm just using this, this is not saying that this person's doing, what if Mr. Jacklauting, he's saying he's keeping the stokes, and what if somebody like that came in and said, I wanna run the whole shit, you manage? And, you know, and I'm just using that as an example, everyone, that somebody like that that would have the ability, that does have the food, the beverages, the banquet facilities, it may end up being though that someone is running the downstairs restaurant, and there is someone that does want strictly the banquet, that's what I'm saying, is it, would it be the simplest way to do it? I don't know, I haven't written RFPs.
I, and I haven't either, I, I just worry sometimes if it's too simple, it doesn't necessarily get understood.
Comment, brother?
Please, uh, is it a separate, uh, event, is it still reasonable if you don't have a separate kitchen?
It depends on who the person is, whether they have a catering facility or what they have. Maybe there is a kitchen here, but it's not outfitted like a fully functional kitchen you have.
I mean, the reality is, prior to Friday, a lot of the food was made off, so, a lot of the banquet food was made off-site and brought in here, so it could not, it takes your question, but it may not for some reason.
And this discussion, this would include somebody coming in and doing the golf course and the entertainment?
That's okay, you don't have to go with the RFP, yeah, you don't have to go with the...
The, the, what I'm looking for is to have as many options as possible, so that we can make the best decision possible, not limiting our choices with the input of the community.
Comment? Tim Moore, forty-seven, eight, former... Just that someone that reads RFPs a lot, uh, your, your vendors that you're going to are used to reading RFPs. To Mr. Valterius, what he's suggesting, it makes a lot of sense to me, right? You, you set up all your options, because then when your vendor reads an RFP, they understand what you're looking for. It gives you an opportunity within that RFP in another section to put, if there are any additional comments or ways that you see that you would like this, you can put it in the free comment section. Submitting an RFP is only to your benefit, right? So, if they read what you're looking for and they don't like that, but they wanna bid on their own piece of the pie, you, you don't have to accept their bid, it gives you an option now, and it gives them the understanding exactly what you're looking for. So, it makes a lot of sense to me to have an open free comment section, but to disclose to them exactly what you're looking for so they have an opportunity to bid on any of those things. You always have the opportunity to return that bid and say, that's not what we're looking for, we're gonna give you another opportunity to come back to this, otherwise, we're not interested.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. John.
So, I'm going to make a motion, I'm gonna do what he said.
There might be help doing it now.
Maybe it's just now.
There are some people that aren't skillful in doing this, I mean, just, you need to put that in, articulate that to someone that can put that on paper, right?
Right, but, um, I, uh, I'd like to make a motion, I think we have a grid here, to issue RFP for operation of first floor restaurant, operation of banquet facilities, and operation of all food and beverage operations.
So, we have one or three questions? Without including, without including the golf course at all as part of it?
Without including the golf course, we've already taken here the golf course as a...
Yeah, I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ayes aye.
Reiterate if you're bothered.
Yeah.
You, you don't do this now, you have to figure out who's a little bit of a...
Right, now, you could use different resources, just as a comment on this, different resources for this, like Mr. Hirsch and other people said, hey, they could do an hourly thing where they could help you move forward, or they could, you know, be a consultant, or they could run the process. There's multiple choices you can make.
Do we have anyone at this point writing the other RFP?
No.
To, to me, this is a fairly simple one.
Right.
I, I have to look at what RFP is, you know, if there's a template or something.
There's templates out there, you can pull other RFPs that people have used, like, you know, Ben Salem, they use Morning Star Golf to run their banquet and restaurant facilities, and, you know, I'm sure there must be some around from Nathan Ritzman. Jeffersonville or...
And once we have, you have to write the RFP, then we bring it to the board to send it out, correct? Yeah.
So, so we approve.
Hopefully, we can get something in the next couple of months.
You have to pick it from out of the, out of the form, if you wanna change something.
Very good. All right, we've authorized Township Engineer to work on Troutline Secondary Access Plan. Joe, I think you were gonna update us on that?
Yes, um, this evening, I wanted to present to the board a lot of back to Township Engagement Planning Services with Simone Collins to prepare a comprehensive recreational plan for Troutline Sports Complex. This plan was used or prepared for several reasons, one, to obtain future grants as well as for future, um, improvements to the park. One of the concepts that the township was looking at is, is constructing a secondary access that would serve as a multipurpose. Currently, we only have one access into the park. If we had a secondary access, this would be allowed for more people to access during events, as well as for emergency, as also for parking. And this secondary access would be from Gibraltar Road, uh, into the park as it goes towards West Never See Road. Currently, there's a walking trail, this access road would serve as a bike path, as a walking path, as well as a road. It also can be gated off at the township's discretion and opened whenever there's a need for it or to remain as a public use. For the road, it would allow the bike path and walkway to be accessible to, uh, the residents. In addition to this, this access road, Pennsylvania American Water has an existing, or they acquired an interceptor center, sewer interceptor, along more or less the existing pathway. And this interceptor needs to be replaced, this is part of the acquisition, my understanding, and I'm not sure if they're under the consent order from DEP, but from my conversation with PA American, they need to have this interceptor replaced, I think, within the next two years, roughly. In addition, the township had a meeting with PA American and last fall, looking at maybe the option of bringing water, domestic water into the park, which would allow for more bathroom facilities, as well as irrigation and pavilions. Uh, currently, we don't have, it's just well or clearance, correct?
That's correct, uh, all water systems down there, well, um, we have to have Suburban constantly checking because of the condition of the water, we have a system to clean it up, uh, by doing, and also, with, with all the plans that they have, they're, once this Troutline project is finished, that well is not gonna be able to supply, not gonna be able to fill down. So, we definitely need that, and that will also make a little water loophole for the water companies, so you don't have the dead end coming in there.
Yeah, they, they seem very receptive to, uh, accommodating the township with extending that water, water main as well for future use. Tonight, one of the issues that was presented to PA American was whether they would prefer to have the township work with them with the interceptor and the water line, as well as the, the uphill walking or access drive at the same time so this construction can take place where there's only gonna be one disturbance. Unfortunately, we're doing a lot of environmentally sensitive areas where we're gonna need to get permits in. Uh, we're gonna need to have joint permits, as well as we're gonna be in the floodway, the flood plain, which deals with a lot of environmental studies. However, it has to do these all at one time, so that we can use them for all three projects if the township chooses to, to proceed that in that direction. Uh, this will also minimize the disturbance, because once we have a contractor come in, we'd rather have the sewer line taking place, followed by the water line, and then finally, the walking path slash access drive can be constructed, and then we're limiting that disturbance. Uh, tonight, we're looking at permission to be able to coordinate with Pennsylvania American, and also look at having, getting some cost to have an environmental study performed. We did meet with an environmental firm, uh, we're trying to receive some numbers to see what the cost would be. There is two turtle species that needs to be identified that did come through, or they call it pinnyhead. So, there is an extensive amount of permitting that is required, however, in order to get things moving, we were hoping we could, uh, at least get permission this evening to proceed with the preliminary environmental studies, uh, and then we'd be in a better situation at the next meeting to present some numbers to the board, as well as, I apologize for some visuals, but we might be able to show the township where the access and the typical cross-section.
And then you'd be presenting, presenting at that time, you know, what the, this part of the project would cost?
Cost, yes, yes. Right now, PA American has reached out, they're, they're very aggressive, for lack of a better word, to proceed with the interceptor, they like to have that replaced, so they're, they've been wondering where things stand, so I, I'd be in a position tonight to at least report back to them, unless, I don't know, that we're gonna be looking into starting environmental, um, studies. They also are very receptive to, uh, sharing these costs with the township, um, since the interceptor's gonna be their project, however, environmental studies, um, those costs can be shared, it wasn't agreed upon percentage-wise, but they were receptive to that at our meeting last fall.
So, what type of workload are we talking about to get to the next step?
Um, my, my recommendation would be to proceed to look into, again, the environmental studies, complete now takes some time, only because we're gonna have to have an initial meeting with DEP to discuss the project. DEP's very receptive to having what they call project scope meeting, where we would meet with them, discuss the project and, uh, the scope, and they would at least give us the right direction to what we need to do. We have an idea, we identified areas on the site that we're gonna need to have permits, however, with DEP, we're always, it's, it's better to have communication with them upfront, they'll help in the permitting process, because it could take several months to six days, sometimes a year, depending upon their workload, because of the backlog for the review of these permits. So, we're hoping that we can get the environmental work to take place this year, that we'd be in a better position by the end of the year to have more of their designs done and work with PA American. And I have more information to the board, uh, provide that as well with a scope, uh, for the next meeting.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, I believe about a year and a half went into a, a project planning team and committees... Yeah, I believe a year and a half went into a project planning team and committees with the public to come up with a long-term plan for what this site may, may look like in the future. Probably anticipating the full plan implementation, probably 10 plus years. This is a step in the process to see if they can give reasonable access into and out of that site handling on a volume of activity. So I don't know. Questions from the board, from Joe?
We'll be advancing. Also, we'll be already having existing trail. However, the trail will be expanded that it will not only allow for pedestrians, it will be also for bikes, which currently it is, but it's going to be a much more safer, I'll say, layout. And then we'll also have that secondary access as well.
It would also be a huge asset as far as the safety. Say we have a 422 huge accident and we need to send people around instead of trying to weave around through all these other little roads. We can then, once Gibraltar is there, they can send them down to Gibraltar, send them through there and come back out East Never Sink and down Mount Penn exit and you're out of here instead of all this other stuff. Same way, if it's going the other direction, they can go up Mount Penn exit, go down to East Never Sink and straight through, come out of Gibraltar and off they are. So it's, it would add a lot of, a lot of flexibility to what we can do. One other thing we have, the parking lot where we have a
Yes.
Walking trail right now. And we've been talking about this.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Maybe 10 years.
We can't hear you.
We've been talking about this for more than 10 years. You know, I think, I think you can even, even when you were here, we were talking about those prop, that little piece of property there. There's three little pieces that nobody can build on because it's all swamp land. But we could put, enlarge our parking area for the, and it's always crowded down there in the walking trail. But also, if we're going to do this road, it would give us a great opportunity to make that road.
Yes. Currently, we would, we would need to get amazement from those three properties to do any improvements, even though there is amazement established for the trail itself. However, any expansion, like Clarence mentioned, where we're going to add parking, which is a need in that area, we would need to get permission from those respective property owners. There are three property owners in that vicinity. Our recommendation and would be is to look into acquiring those properties. Then we would have permission with the art property to do a joint over the already owned. And that will allow us to do those improvements as well as expansion because not only we're in the parking, we're probably going to have to do BMP best natural practice facilities to compensate for any increase in store order that may be generated with the expansion of that walkway turning into that multipurpose access.
Yeah, and that would definitely use and often overflowing with cars in there.
So what do you like? I guess Sam needs to look into, I think we actually have looked into this before.
We do. I think, Sam, I believe I may forward some information. A while ago, last fall, there was three, three parcels that Township was looking into, doing some research. We pulled the deeds already for those parcels and I can forward that information back to you again and so forth. But we're looking at the possibility to acquire that land.
Thank you.
So do you need anything from us?
Yeah, I think he needs authorization to start talking to the party so he can come back to us with a more detailed estimate and plan.
All right. So I'll make a motion to allow our engineers and solicitors to proceed with.
Could you speak into the mic, Greg? Could you speak into the mic?
The Troutline Sports Complex.
Okay.
Is that one?
I've always wrote that. I would second that. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Ayes, ayes. Monthly Golf Report. Derek, could you maybe just say a couple of words if you have a minute or?
Yeah.
Can you keep your weather like this?
Easy. Derek Sander, Facility Operations Manager at Country Club. Golf report, rounds are open February 2020. We have 510 for this February. Last February, 2019, we only had 187. So a big increase there. Currently, we're upping rounds year to date for 2020. We have 929. And last year, we were at 318. So in the month of February, 44% of the rounds were played by residents. 36% were played by non-residents. So let's hope the great weather still continues. Year-to-date revenues, green fees were up, car fees were up, jogging range was up, merchandise and F&amp;B all up. And simply that's just because we had great weather and a lot of play. Highest of February, we didn't have a day of any snow cover. We had 56 players for February, Jack Frost. On Sunday, February 23rd, we had 112 rounds. That's one of the highest days I've had in February in my golf career. And these past few days, we had 68 players for the Jack Frost on Saturday. Yesterday, we had 107 rounds. Today, we had 108 rounds. So things are going super well. And we have an April Fool's tournament at the end of the month. March 28th, that sold out last year. And then we have a new tournament coming up on May the 2nd, the RCC Heritage. Where they'll be honoring us being on the historic registry. So things are going well.
Very good. Thank you, Derek. I would say it's not just the weather. I mean, I think Brian has done a fantastic job, you know, working mainly by himself is one of keeping things out of clean up. There's been a lot of wind damage. Derek's created a lot of new contacts for outings and tournaments, and there's been a lot of new people coming to the facility and enjoying it. When I looked at the, the report, for those, if you just see the numbers from this year on February year to date is the Golf Report. If you compare it to last year, January and February, our total costs of operation are down. Our revenues are up due to additional plays. So about 20, what I count, saw was about $25,000 ahead of last year, just in the first two months. So, and last year was a great year. So I think we're off to a really nice start.
I, I'd like to add, you know, the weather's been great, but the guy gives Derek a lot of credit organizing that tournament Saturday. The weather wasn't great. I was here. We had 68 players. If we hadn't had a tournament, if Derek hadn't put the extra effort into organizing the tournament, we might have had 10 players here. So he deserves a lot of credit for that. But people don't always see, he works five days a week. He was here all day Saturday, and he was here all time Sunday. So I just want to make sure he knows we appreciate that. And I also want to thank Brian because I see Brian here every Saturday and Sunday morning, it seems. And last night, last evening, before it was start, he was out working on the greens so that we didn't have to shut down the course in order to do the required maintenance in the spring. So I'd also like to thank him. I have one other comment about the golf committees. Now the time or is there?
Are you, I will recognize you. You have to make that comment.
Okay. I also read on social media Mr. Crusius's quote, I'm not quoting, "The golf committee will determine our options for green space like pavilions, tennis court, pool, walking and bike trails." I just, I did not believe that was the goal of the golf committee. And, you know, we'll have volunteers come in, and I've been a volunteer in many cases, and I hate, I hate asking people to volunteer and then not listen to them. So I will be very upfront about this, that I will not support any change to the golf course, like adding a tennis court or adding a pool or anything like that. So I really, I think it would be a poor use of volunteers to spend a lot of time discussing that.
You could come sit in the audience tomorrow.
Yeah.
And you're running, you're running the.
Right.
Actually, Michelle. You can come sit in the audience tomorrow.
Now, actually, actually, I'm not going to do that. I'm just telling you upfront right now, I do not support that. It would not be a little debate.
Yeah. So we will see. So we will have, please keep it down. Yeah, we will have, we will have over five supervisors. We'll make the right decisions going forward along with the public. Come sit in the audience.
Thank you.
And regarding the meetings, since, since Greg brought it up, the plan and the format for tomorrow's meeting will be a brief introduction. And then Derek and Brian will have an opportunity to speak. And what they are going to do is talk about basically the next year to the next year, this year and next. Where we're at, what we need, how we can be successful, what do we need from the support, marketing, whatever, whatever they need from the golf side and the ground side. And then we would have an opportunity to ask questions. So it's going to be a very, very simple format tomorrow. And we're not, as far as other things, this is the way I want to see it run. And I think you recognize me as the chair. So that is what I'm going to do. But again, intro, Derek, Brian, and then discussion points and ask questions. And what we really want to do is just find out as much as we can. We all know that the course itself was just trying to cut everything and make money, which is, which is great. That's what every business should do. Try to be as efficient as possible. But also too, and that does happen, sometimes things slide by. So what we need to do is find out where they see the golf and the grounds now and discuss it with us. And then we will talk about, and one of my goals would be, is to reach out to the neighboring municipalities that have golf courses, like Jeffersonville and then Salem and Allentown. Those places and to talk with them to see how they've made it successful in their communities.
Thank you, Derek.
I just have a question. Is he talking about a public meeting?
Yes.
Public hearing?
Yes, talk tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
It's, it's a committee meeting. Tomorrow, we discuss.
But it's not open to the public?
No, it is. It is.
6:00 PM here tomorrow.
6:00 PM right here. Everybody's at home.
Even Greg.
Come on over.
I make another comment too. I mean, thank you again to all our volunteers. I mean, I was out today, yesterday. I saw some of the flower beds. Now, nicely, they look, they're ready to cut down. I think, you know, people are seeing, you know, when you have a good time location, you see that it is taken care of. You're getting more repeat business coming back. I've seen people this year that I haven't seen in years come back to this property. So pretty exciting.
Don, I agree. Yeah, good. All right, LeBron, thank you very much, everyone. Monthly Write to Know Report. It's been posted on the public site. Keep, keep track of it. See how many. How they have the number. I want to know if any comments, Clarence or anyone, how many. It's been running about.
It's a little deeper. It's a little better. It's a little better this month.
Well, I think, look, Greg, I think I would compliment Tina Stevens because the big difference I see in the Write to Know requests are eight of 11 were completed within five days.
I did.
And that was not past practice. So I just really want to make sure that we recognize her hard work and that the Township, sometimes it's going to take long. That's just the way it is. But with the, with the easy ones, they're getting done in time. And that, I, I appreciate your response to this.
Very good. Thank you. No business. Authorizing C-Bids. Now, I'm wondering, authorizing C-Bids for demolition of the Radio Shack building.
As part of the streets gate, and that's coming up here this year to do the sidewalk. The one of the things they need to do is demolish Radio Shack because part of that sidewalk and the realignment of some curb also. And at Dr. Borha's building, they will realign that entire intersection. $500,000 of that grant is put aside for that entrance. But we have to demolish Radio Shack to get that done. So we need to further moving on that. We're not on that one.
Very good. And in the meantime, I think it was going to be a good purpose.
Yeah, the police want you to do it or the fire.
Fire police. It's going to get some training for the building.
Yeah, fire department, demolishing the fire department wants them to train and grow them.
But it is part of our mission for them to do.
Yes. And it's also, whatever it costs to demolish it, they, they were looking at the number somewhere in $7,000. That is part of our max.
Could, could you speak in the mic, please? I'm tired of asking this, but if it's far away from your mouth, we can't hear you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's part, $70,000 is part of what Clarence was saying.
Well, that's, yeah.
I'd estimate that it's part of our.
What a commitment that we have on management. That will be our management.
I'll, I'll make a motion to authorize administration C-Bids for demolition of the Radio Shack.
Second. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ayes. Authorizing purchase of 2018 Caterpillar 440 backhoe loader, $161,000. Clarence, my, we go, we'll comment.
Well, initially, this piece of equipment is currently $192,000 from buy up right now. Okay. Initially, this backhoe, the original price of this was $192,000. We get to do the government pricing. Plus, since we're buying a 2018 leftover, we're saving another $5,000 off the next two. So that's where, with the government pricing and also that $5,000 discount, that's where you're seeing it down to $160,000. And this would be the first Caterpillar that we have. The 2004 one that we do have now is the one that you do see here at the parking lot a lot here because it's not really roadworthy. However, we do rely on it, but we do get major news for Coldestex and something that we take every piece of equipment we have. To do that, we have a total of 88 Coldestex containers.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six Coldestex. So with that, we take our loader, every piece of equipment we have, like our backhoes, our tractors and everything.
And the old ones, can be disposed of or?
We will sell them in this bid. The dealership that we talked to, they don't really want tradings, but they mentioned that you can only see roughly close to $20,000 in this bid for, for a vehicle, machine that doesn't.
Thank you. So, Justin, oh, so, yeah, we should probably authorize to advertise the old one as well?
Yes, you could, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of the 2019 Caterpillar 440 backhoe loader.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, ayes. And that is a budget item. I'll also make a motion to authorize the placement of the 2004 John Deere backhoe one in this bid.
Are we getting the mark before the course on this one?
Rather than, I mean, it's one, the other one.
Any appeal on delivery, Tom?
If I call in the marshes as it's left over, we will have it by the end of the week.
Then the answer's out in the motion.
Yes.
So I made a motion for the, for you to place on me this code.
I'll second. The only request they have is that we make payment within 30 days.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes, ayes. Jen, where's that in the form?
Yep.
Okay, we'll ask her to introduce that. Make sure she has the money for that. For 30 days, famous, yeah. Tax month number? Okay, Clarence. Authorize beach tree service for the removal of trees and creating country club in the amount of $11,075.
We have four trees, large trees, out here between Rocha and Back of the Country Club that we remove with the cranks. We also have three large, two. We also have three large, three large in the, on the other side of the pro shop.
Yeah.
Along with a bunch of other small stuff. Easy cutting it down, cleaning it up, the only thing we do is take away the big walls, everything else gets cleaned up. It's very good prospect. We had another pool of six trees, dollars. Pretty market.
Yeah, I think the good price was planned for a long time, and these trees are getting old, they're hanging over the structures. They would potentially do a lot of damage.
I can make a motion to authorize these tree service, removal of trees at Ready Country Club in the amount of eleven thousand seventy five dollars.
Second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes out. Approved contract with Golf Cart Services Incorporated in the amount of twenty nine thousand nine hundred seventy five dollars for the lease of golf cart fleet, or the existing ten and eleven year old carts. Just as some background information, I've worked through these numbers, the last couple of years we've been talking about this. We spent in excess of thirty thousand dollars keeping the old carts running last year. They were breaking down, they were being stranded out by golf course. And, you know, this is an excellent price, I think, that Derek has worked with several different vendors with, but leave it open.
She omitted it, but this is a lease of like four years.
A lease of four years.
Didn't we do this last year? I think we proved this last year.
Well, we did not exit, we talked with the old ones, we decided to repair the old ones, and we tracked it and got over thirty thousand dollars in parts and labor. And we still understand a lot of the cars.
I'd like to remind everyone, I'm a member of Ready Country Club. I did receive word from the ethics commission that it is okay for me to participate in these discussions and votes. And I have, I turned in the paperwork to Michelle Gilkey.
Very good. I have not received one yet, I got, I got an extension letter, a thirty day extension letter. They asked for more time for me. Mr. Hughes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, shouldn't this go out for a bid?
It was, it was.
So you have other bids for the?
Three bids, the other two were for higher, and I would say they are all actually municipal bid already. We wouldn't have to go with three bids, but we did. One was coast cars and two of them are federal programs.
Thank you.
So they were excellent prices.
Can we increase the rates for them to pay for this?
And I will say, our consultant, you know, Don Propri, and we'll say, he said, hey, go ahead with this. If it was under, worked out to nine hundred dollars a year per cart, this works out to something in the neighborhood of under seven hundred dollars. So a very excellent price.
So we increased the fees that we paid for this?
Yes.
And it actually will cost you money, they didn't pay for this much. Because we increased the rates last year to pay for this year. Two bucks, two bucks a cart.
So we had a, oh, you just made a comment.
I have a motion.
I move to be approved in contract for our court services, the amount of twenty nine thousand nine hundred seventy five dollars.
You want to make a question?
Yeah, I'll second it, and then I have a question, what fees are you talking about?
We increased the fees.
For just regular daily play, they went from fifteen a cart to seventeen a cart.
Always the same issue?
Yeah, to pay for the cart. To anticipate if there was flexibility there, yes. So we had a first and a second, any further discussion?
Yes, again, due to transparency, the, the number, this is a four year contract, this was the first year. So there is, and what they do is they bill, like, is it May through June?
Yes.
During June, which is, which is common for typical during the off season.
This year it's June through October, and the next three years it'll be May through October.
Okay, so is it, is a four year contract, and in the end, there is a, an option to buy, correct?
It's not an option to buy, but typically the best practice is we just renew the lease.
I'm just saying that there is an option, but, but since the other one's lasted ten years, we probably will end up renewing or some other type of lease at that point.
Before we move on, a quick comment, Mr. Hughes.
Congratulations, membership, is it? Does that, that has a connotation to it? Especially calling it a Ready Country Club? And there are, there's a big discussion on, on next year about this, about people suggesting different names and making, so it sounded more inclusive.
Yeah, we've been.
But as far as membership, couldn't it even just be called something like season pass instead of membership? And that might not sound as.
We, we, we go like different names and, you know, I get Derek to comment on this, but I've struggled through this as well. We use only season pass one year, but whether you're a public course, a municipal course, a private course, they all use the terminology, terminology, membership. So when we are the only one not using that terminology, which is commonly used, you kind of exclude yourself, like they say, don't do half this.
Okay.
You know, so it, it becomes a challenge, how it markets. And we've been talking about the name for many years too, so that's, that's a difficult one as well. We'll continue. Thank you. So we had a first and a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes out. Authorized destruction of fire police vehicle nineteen, nineteen ninety four Ford ambulance.
This vehicle is not roadworthy, and rather than just trying to sell it to somebody, it feels better off being destroyed.
Fire police are here. And this is the one with the fuel leak or something across the car?
This is the, one of the engine problems, it would actually need a new engine. The fire police still have two other vehicles, we gave them the crime scene van that used to be used by the police department, so they have that. And they also have the O6 ambulance, so.
I'll make a motion to authorize the destruction of this fire police nineteen ninety four Ford ambulance.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You want the table? This one just, you know, break?
We need to do that.
Okay. How long, how long we can do? Okay, good. We want to probably handle this, so we're going to take a quick recess for probably three minutes. We got a little bit of a lag in a few minutes. All right, thanks. So thank you, everyone, we just had to make a clarification, and first, thank you, Mr. Hughes, for pointing something out. Like to follow up on the meeting? Thank you, thank you for the information. Item number six on the agenda, we have, since the beginning of the year, this greater township manager is no longer with us. Just announced that we had a resignation of our interim township manager. We should not be calling them these stipends the way it's worded on here, we should call these a temporary increase in salary due to responsibility increase. We're asking people to step up and do these roles while we're short on managers. Typically, our township manager or assistant manager or others would take on these roles, but we're asking employees to put in extra time to do certain things. So we wanted to have a discussion here on, on these positions and temporarily increase of reasonable salaries while people are, have their responsibility for these positions. Comments from the rest of the board?
Oh, I mean, I'll comment, I, I know in the, in the corporate world, which is where I'm from, this is, this is not uncommon. If people take on additional responsibilities or have additional duties, job additions, things of that nature, there is typical something, typically something in the short term until that assignment is over. So I'm, I'm used to something like this. So my initial thing is I would not be opposed, I think also it's the right thing to do. If your employees are working extra hours, if their, if their times stay set from eight thirty to five, and they're working weekends and nights to prepare minutes or to work on extra reports, especially our short staff, knowing that there is less salary being paid, again, it's, it's the right thing to do for your people.
I will also say that we would now have reached out to other individuals, other municipalities and leaders that have dealt with these type of things, and we did receive some information on ranges of things that are appropriate or not standard in the industry, but that just comes.
Supermarket.
Supermarket. Market, market scene, from the positions. So comments or motion for any of these? Mr. Hughes.
I have a question, what kind of additional remuneration are we thinking of giving these three individuals?
That's what we're discussing right now.
Are we going to discuss the amount that they're going to?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
And, oh, on top of that, we've noticed that no one's been working overtime. The office fills up at the right time in the morning.
So, yeah, that's, yeah, not what we're discussing right now.
I thought, I thought we're discussing the reason for a stipend.
We're, we're discussing additional responsibilities that we're asking people to take on.
Okay, but if they can fulfill those duties within the eight hour work period?
They can.
Someone's interrupting from the audience while we're discussing.
They're interrupting. They can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Well, here's the thing, you know, this is taxpayer money, it's not in the budget, and I think.
Yes, it is.
It's in the budget to give.
We're not paying a township manager right now, we're not paying assistant township manager, we're getting people to pick up their duties.
Okay, well, it initially is not in the budget, we just reduce the expenses by not having it. But beside that, I think we need to know, is there really a need for this? Because I don't see anyone working over eight hours there, I don't see the midnight, and listen, I'm someone who used to work over a hundred hours a week. So I can understand the motivation to compensate these people if they're working extra hours. But if they're fitting these hours within the eight hour timeframe that they're scheduled to work, that's no undue, you know, pressure for them. Eight hours is eight hours.
Yes.
And lawyers, you guys know this stuff, right?
Thank you, thank you for your comments, but this is over and above, no one's giving up any of their current responsibilities. So they are putting in extra time, and I can attest to that from what I have experienced.
If you can squeeze in eight hours, I mean, where are they? Last time in those eight hours?
Thank you. But it is not, it is over and above normal job descriptions. In my opinion, from what I have experienced. I will tell you, I get a lot of information and stuff all weekend long and it's, and it's, you know, it's stuff that you need from these roles, and we need to have it available, in my opinion. Yep, or suggestion or emotion?
I'm about to draw some numbers for discussion, not make a motion, okay? My understanding is treasurer was the least of additional responsibilities, and then secretary, then of course manager. So that's, that's where I'm throwing these out as a starting point.
So what is it? Can I make one, one correction?
Okay.
Not correction, we commented, I wouldn't say responsibilities, time requirement.
Time requirement.
Could you just say it one more time, treasurer is the order that you said?
And treasurer, then secretary, then township manager.
Thank you. We're time, time requirement, responsibility.
And responsibility. So one thought would be two hundred dollars a month, treasurer, three hundred dollars a month, secretary, five hundred dollars a month, manager, although manager's a big responsibility. But it has a starting point for a discussion.
Yeah, I think we can go different ways, I mean, the data that I have, I mean, we've been attending courses, not courses, we've been talking to other municipalities and people that deal in recruitment and other things, the numbers I got and was more comfortable within a range was same, same order for time requirement with recurrent responsibilities was treasurer, three hundred per month, secretary, five hundred per month, and interim manager, one thousand per month. I can support that, but that was, you know, when I see the time requirement, what's been put in, it's a pretty high class job. And this is temporary, let me back up one minute, our process, so far, we have about twenty five applicants for township manager. That process window closes on March twentieth, at which point we will start leading that down and starting interviews. So we're really talking here, you know, we'll be interviewing people starting the end of March, you know, so hopefully moving that process along. We just want to do the right thing in the interim, so we're talking a short window here of, of people picking up the slack while we're down on bodies. So, so overall, financial impact is not very large, in my opinion, for being out of these two salaries.
Your numbers were three hundred, five hundred, one thousand?
That's, that's what I heard from.
I was disappointed.
Yours are two, three, and five. Other comments, motions, any?
I can, I can supply, I support those numbers, again, I know we'll be, we currently not spending, and again, I'm looking to spend money. I'm saying that people that are taking the additional responsibility and time should be compensated.
Yeah, we're talking a total, you know, even if we go for months here, we're talking from the under ten thousand dollar minimum bracket, a hundred fifty thousand dollar role, you know, now plus, you know, probably quarter billion dollars, certainly appropriated, but, you know, people are picking up these extra responsibilities in the meantime.
What are we calling this, a temporary?
We are calling this, what I call it, a temporary increase in salary. So as soon as the responsibility shifts to new township, often a township manager is the secretary or is the treasurer, or obviously the manager, you know, he would assume that responsibility, so they go, this is a temporary increase.
I'd like a motion to give a temporary increase in salary of three hundred dollars a month for the treasurer position.
Can you do all three?
You could do it all.
Of all months, five hundred dollars a month for the secretary position, and a thousand dollars a month for the township manager position.
I will second that motion.
Any further, just so the motion's clear, so I understand it's, it's so long as those responsibilities are held, like each of those individuals.
Exactly.
Meaning that it would revert back to the current salary or whatever the salary is, as of the year, whatever the salary's approved at the initial budget, once those responsibilities cease.
Yes, as soon as the new person, just clarify, it moves on. It's temporary.
And demolify.
Starting, um, starting with any time in the position of that role. You have a role.
So you're saying it's retro?
Yeah.
From January?
Whatever we need to change.
Yes, to add to my motion.
Well, here's what I'll suggest, that the way, if it's going to be retro, I would suggest three separate motions because not all of these positions have been, have opened up at the same time, so I would suggest it was an individual motion with, with the addition of this retroactive, so that's what the board, that's what I'm hearing, so that the minutes are clear.
All right, so I withdraw my motion. Do you want to draw your second?
Draw my second.
All right, so try again.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to give a temporary salary increase for the township treasurer of three hundred dollars, retroactive to the person taking the position.
Second. Just second. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? Eyes out. Order one, Mr. Hughes.
I'll make a motion to give a temporary increase in salary, retroactively for the position of township secretary of five hundred dollars a month.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I oppose.
Aye.
Eyes out. Row is four to one, four to one, nine.
I'll make a motion for a temporary increase in salary of $1,000 for the temporary township manager of $1,000 a month. Did I say that right?
Yes.
The minutes were reflected, too, I don't know if it's worth discussion.
I'll second. John's second. All is, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
And it's not that I'm anything against employees.
Can you speak?
I'm not anything against employees, it's just I don't feel a bunch of the stuff that, uh, money is-
Still, still can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I have nothing against any of the employees, I just don't believe in getting the extra monies with the salaries they, they currently got. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to adopt check signing procedure. Jen, you want to comment on this? Since we don't have, currently, you don't have a township manager, or we have, we're short on people signing some checks.
We are short on signatures currently. The current authorized signers are the township manager, the operations director, and the accounting officer. Our, our checks require two out of the three of those folks. Currently, we only have one of those people employed by us, so I do not have two. So we are keeping the accounting officer, keeping the township manager, which of course is a vacant position currently, adding the board chairperson and the board vice chairperson to the accounts, so that we would have at least three people available to get two of those signatures for all checks.
Very good. Thank you. Any issues, comments, or? The motion to change the check signing procedure?
I move that we adopt the check signing procedure as outlined.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Eyes out. Appointment of extra Township Planning Commission for 2020 to 2023 term.
Make a motion to appoint Todd Arnold as-
I can't hear you, please.
Make a motion to his, to appoint Todd Arnold, I think he's here somewhere over there. Township Planning Commission, 2020 to 2023. I think he's qualified, I think he's a great guy.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Great, great. I guess he got, Todd, I guess he got.
Yeah, let me make a comment there, that, you know, we had, they were happy to, very happy to see that, you know, people are willing to step in and, and step in and volunteer, put in their application. We had three candidates, all very, very strong candidates, you know, so it was a tough decision, but Todd's been very, participated a lot, so he's been engaged in the process, and he's always wanted to, so I think it's great to him. Thank you. Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Eyes out. Adopt resolution approving and adopting tax collector fees. I don't know if Jen can give a comment, or does Joe, Joe, you know, this is a minor fee, and it's made with some-
The tax collector, Charlie Diamond, has requested an increase, there's a couple fees listed on the resolution, the only one he's requesting an increase of is the tax certification fee. That is the fee that he gets from title companies when somebody buys/sales their home to do a tax cert, to see if the taxes are paid for the transaction. That is not money that comes from the township, that is money that comes from the buyer of the property and gets handled in their settlement. So he last requested an increase of this fee two years ago.
And I think the fee increase is going from $40 to $50.
Correct, and he did a little bit of market research, we'll call it, and he is not the highest in the county. Robinson and Coogru, I believe it was, he told me, are way higher than he is. There are a lot lower with much smaller populations, but he's kind of middle of the road of his tax cert fee.
Very good. Thanks, Joe.
I move that we approve the resolution approving and adopting the revised tax collector fee.
I'll second.
And then, just again, to Jen, is correct, I've worked with 499 or 500 of these individuals, and that tax service fee, some are lower, some are higher, and it is a pass-through fee that's handled by the title companies and settlements, and it has nothing to do with an individual, other than if you happen to be buying or refinancing your home.
Thank you, Joe. Any further comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Eyes out. Authorize advertisement or request or proposal for the Daniel Boone Homestead Master Plan. Fire for comment on this one?
I don't have a lot of information on this, other than, you know, we do have a grant, and I think we have people already-
We have a $50,000 grant that we were awarded to complete a master plan for the Daniel Boone Homestead. We're working in conjunction with PHMC, they own the property, the estate owned the property. This is something that they really want, they're looking to expand on the recreational activities at the property, passive recreation, not active, we're not talking about sports fields or anything like that. So we are working with them in order to create the master plan, so that we can expand over the store value of the company and get more people to it.
And this is, so we received the grant, or we matched that, or the, or anticipating the master plan, we have?
Have that on now?
But whenever it's specified, we gotta put something into the, to receive the grant.
Right, yes. But I, I don't want to say incorrect information.
And this is a conjunction, actually, with the next one, where, you know, basically, a committee will be formed with presidents, and a committee will be formed to address this, and over the next year, what, how to best utilize a property. So that will be the next item, but this one, um, any other comments on this? I mean, I think it's not going to move forward without the plan, we received the grant, the flight form receives the grant, you do.
It is a huge job to do. Large piece of work, which has endless possibilities.
300 acres.
I'll make a motion to authorize the advertisement of request for proposal for the Daniel Boone Homestead Master.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Eric, Eric, Michelle?
Yes, I, I think we are over our heads with trying to develop everything. I would suggest for the Daniel Boone Homestead is possibly talk to the county, they've got a lot of money for, for parks and everything, and see if they would be interested in taking that over, and just letting us enjoy it, rather than putting our money into. Think how much we have, there are a lot of work that we need to develop, and it could be a regional, part for, excuse me. I mean, it's something to think about.
Yeah.
This is going to take a lot of manpower for that 300 acres, you're doing primary park, I mean, we just can't-
Entrocon. Entrocon.
Yeah, so, and historic area, I'm sure that they take their antiques out, we'll have to replace them all, the antiques, so it's something to think about.
Now, my understanding is that we're not committing to the future here, I mean, we're developing a, committing to develop and work, find someone to help develop a master plan, and then having a committee to work with that, so the recommendation that committee could be to do just that.
Yeah, and contact the department.
Right. So I think we're just saying, sitting there, we should think about what we want to do.
Yeah, because we have the primary parks, so I'm just trying to cut down on everybody's work here.
Yeah.
And Laurie, just to confirm, there is, we're not committing any money, any money, any funds to do this right now?
I don't, yeah, unfortunately, Will and I worked on this together, and I don't recall off the top of my head if this is a matched grant or not.
Can't, can't hear you, could you speak into the mic, please? We'd like to know what you're talking about.
We tabled this the next, can we do that? I think we should, we should, we should have the numbers.
Probably could figure it out in a few minutes, but I-
I'll, I'll look at all of them. Yeah, we'll table it for now, if you, if you get the numbers before, next 10 minutes. So we'll table that. And then, I guess we'll table the next one, since a study committee, I guess we still have to do something, but a member of the board was being asked to participate with the committee, excuse me, we got, I don't know that we need a motion for that, that was more of a volunteer, I believe, from the board.
State's approved study committee? If you're going to approve a committee of the board, there shouldn't be a motion, I could simply just-
We'll table that for now. The final one I have, which I mentioned earlier, is the interim township manager role. I talked about the process that we have ongoing, we have a lot of candidates, but that window closes March 20th, you start the interview process. Right now, to function, we, we have, you know, second-class township code, it requires certain people in charge, either an interim manager or a township manager. So we do need to consider, since we have a resignation of our interim manager, we don't have a township manager right now, we're in the process of recruiting that, I think we need to consider, we have to consider making an appointment for an interim township manager.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you going to make that, this candidate finds the language out, are you going to make that point, or are we out to be questioned on the right of that?
We've hired a outside firm to do the recruiting. The challenge with that is going to be, those folks, we have agreed to submit their names, keeping them confidential, they probably all have existing, at least many of them have existing jobs, that they'd be putting on the line if their names got out there. At some point in the process, particularly in the historic reports, you know, I announce candidates are the final, you want it to down to the final, but you'd have to look at whatever their, their agreement was, that they submitted it under. My guess is that they required some type of confidentiality. Typically, what we would do, I mean, I think when we did the search for Chief of Police and others, if you have 25, 30 candidates, you get that down to less than 10, just for the criteria that the board has set up, what we're looking for in a township manager. And when it gets down to, I think, some of the final candidates, I think we would certainly be open to see what we can disclose and how we're making.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Was there a motion to table 10 and 11?
Yes, there was.
There was a motion?
Well, we tabled temporarily.
There was no motion in the second?
No, as, but she's looking, they may go back to it.
Okay.
We may be dealing with them. So right now, we're, right now, we're dealing with the interim township manager role.
I don't see that on the check.
We had to add that, I made that announcement upfront, that we, you know, had the resignation, so we're doing it under new business. You know, I would, I would make the motion for interim township manager, ask, and hopefully people accept appointing Clarence Ham as the interim township manager.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I mean, Clarence has been here 33, 32, 31, 32 years, knows how everything works, very familiar with all the employees and operations, and, you know, we, hopefully, people accept what we ask him to, the board asked him to keep things together as we're considering for township managers.
Get the call from the first team.
Yeah.
I think it's a little bit of a challenge.
So I made the motion, we had a second.
Second, is Mr. Golds here?
Yes. Second, any further discussion?
Congratulations.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Eyes out. Welcome Clarence to the table. Laurie, do we make a motion to table, till next time, we want to make sure we have the data right. Just, yeah, let's table it. I'll make a motion to table number, item 10 and item 11, the, for the request for the RFP for Daniel Boone Homestead, second, as well as the approving of the special committee. I'll second. Second, any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Eyes out. Missing anything? Oh, I made the motion.
I second.
All right, yeah, John, team, the motion, I second. Department of Reports.
Why aren't you always good to do it, Larry? Due to all this new weather, and we're happy to report, we put our tar over the salt pile.
It's bad luck.
Other than that, they've been doing an awful lot of tree work, prepping the roads that we are going to be servicing this year, so it's been a really great opportunity. They're also moving into the parks, starting to work on the fields, they've been aerating down, driving up, last weekend, this week, fixing some benches, so again, this, this weather's been fantastic, and it gives us a real way ahead of where we usually are at this point. But usually, this time, we're fixing snowplow blades and chains, so.
So we're saving, we save a lot of money on the salt for the state and the dirt.
Well, what happened this year, we were, when we started this year, I mean, we had nothing, we couldn't have done one, one more round last year at the end of the winter, that's how we ended. So we filled it up, we have 1,000 tonne. And it's just going to sit there until next year, so yeah, we still have a lot of money left over, and next year, we're not going to have that much, so we probably have over half of what we're going to need next year, so.
Excellent. Excellent.
Um, that's it.
Very good. Chief?
Last Thursday, the police department, along with various other local and state law enforcement agencies, conducted a motor carrier safety inspection detail here in Township. As a result, seven to two vehicles were inspected, we had seven trucks and three drivers that we put out of service, resulting in 65 citations totaling $10,850 in fines that were issued, so a very successful detail. Our officers did a fantastic job. We're asking for some help from the public. Last Friday, at 2:00 p.m., we're investigating a animal cruelty case, we had a dark-colored BMW pull into a residence along the 5,000 block of Gored Town Pike, and dumped a trash bag containing a dead beige and white pit bull that was approximately three years old. The dog was malnourished and had sores all over its body. A picture of the vehicle is located on our Facebook page, we're asking residents, please take a look at the vehicle, and if you can identify who it belongs to, please contact the police department for a crime watch.
Thank you, Chief. Oh, I think, one, one question, Chief, I mean, I, I've seen the billboards up here, I think you've already responded to me, but I saw that automated ticketing is going to be going into effect very soon, I see it on 422, going eastbound, westbound, and I think you explained it to me, but other residents might be curious in that process, how it's going to work?
Yes, so, starting today, on Penn dot control roadways, they'll be conducting photo speed enforcement. So the way it works is, if you are traveling 11 miles per hour over the speed limit in an active construction zone, for your first offense, you'll be issued a written warning, second offense, $75, and the third offense, $150 for each additional offense after that. So it's only for active work zones and that are controlled on Penn dot roadways.
And it's regardless of driver purchase, if you own the vehicle, so be careful who you loan your car to.
Correct, so it goes to the registered owner of the vehicle. It's, it's, it's not a point violation, but it is a fine, and if it doesn't get paid, eventually we'll- It's, it's, it's not a point violation, but it is a fine, and if it doesn't get paid, eventually it'll go to collections and pick result and suspension of your registration.
Great, thank you. Deb?
Just for an update on the Exeter Fire Department Culvert project. Project is ready to go out to bid, however, during the design process, we had utility coordination meeting with the utilities that were within our driveway. This is the culvert that's near the retapping, right close to the AV and Antioch Valley Municipal Authority Treatment Plant. This culvert's been deteriorating for quite some time, and it's in dire need of replacement. We did secure the permits and the approvals, however, during the utility coordination, Mount Penn Water does have a conflict with our new culvert that would be installed. They are, we're firm that the township actually do have our contractor do the relocation work at their expense, not the township. And the design would be done by Mount Penn Water, however, we would need, if the township is interested in engaging in this, we would need a, an agreement between two entities so that reimbursement can be made to the township, once that work is completed. The advantage of us having to do the work is delays, because if not, we have to rely on their utility, their work to do our relocation during construction. Sometimes that's, it's a good challenge, because we are contractors working, then we have to rely on their availability, which would also in turn cause delays and extra cost for, for those type of time delays. If we do the work and we know it will get done, it'll be done per their specifications, they'll do the design, it'll be at their cost. The work will be done at their cost, however, our contractor would perform the work. This would have less time delays and coordination wise, it will work much better. Verizon is going to be present during this, during the project, because they have fiber optics that they're going to need to keep in place. They're just going to be there to help assist the contractor, if we can temporarily short those utilities until construction takes place. Unfortunately, if we move those fibers, then it would probably delay the project an early year and a half. However, we made some design changes that we can accommodate their utility line. However, looking to the board for a motion, assuming to have our solicitor contact their solicitor to prepare whatever necessary reimbursement agreement. So.
I will make, I will make that motion for our solicitor to contact their solicitor to prepare the agreement for reimbursement.
Yes, and I'll provide information to Sam by email, that he has the court date, and that's what we're looking to have the process start.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both, ayes, ayes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Legal?
Yes, um, oh, yes, well, let me, let me first, yeah, let me make one comment first. And, you know, we've had different feedback, we've, I mean, our township secretary has put out different formats of, and we've benchmarked, and we've had a lot of other townships. This is a board supervisor's meeting, we need to conduct business, we want a public comment, we want to do it in the right way, so we look at different templates. You know, people have come to our meetings and said, you know, we weren't sure of the procedure for signups, we weren't sure of how long we can talk. So we put the rules in there, this time, it's upfront, right in front of your face. We've been discussing putting that in the back to have it visible. We want to provide the information, but we don't, certainly don't want it to be adversarial. At the same time, I want to make sure that there is respect of both the public and the board and township employees. So we do have a resolution that's currently in place, it was adopted January of twenty nineteen, which is Resolution Number twenty nineteen dash O two. This is basically what these rules of conduct that are listed on here. So I'll ask, maybe the board members can, can comment, whether they like the rules up front or like them in the back, or people can make a public comment too. So that can change, this is a fluid thing, we're trying to provide the information and be upfront about that. One thing in reviewing this, there have been, you know, several instances, you know, so I look at a way, we looked at some past case law, and whether or not, you know, we want to look at either, you know, the purpose is to address the board, to influence decisions. The purpose is not to attack individuals, you know, whether that be someone in the public, or whether they'll reverse, you know, attacking a board member or a township employee in public. So I think there is possible to just add a.
Yes, I'll just come in, obviously criticism is fair, if I was asked to look at if there was a personal attack was made against an employee or a member of the public or supervisor, if that's something that, you know, could be, is considered appropriate, if it is a personal attack that it directed at one person, that is not fairly, cannot fairly be described as fair criticism related to township business, that's something that certainly the courts have spoken on, it can be something that can be prescribed, it's not appropriate for, for this form. The board can make reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on things like that. If the board were inclined, yes, you could, you could prescribe personal attacks. It's a hazy mind sometimes, though, in terms of what's criticism, what's, you know, a personal attack. But that would be appropriate if the board is inclined.
So now, any, you have any other comments? We had an executive session.
No, I mean, the only comment I would make is that I was.
Oh, not regarding this.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
The only other comments I have, we had an executive session where we discussed the, the tax assessment dispute we've talked about previously,
with County Homes, Recreation Matter, and personnel matters, that's all I have.
So we'll, we'll table that for one section, so, second. Thank you for that. Public, let's do public comment now. Tim Morgan.
Good evening, Tim Morgan, forty-seven eighty Farming Ridge Boulevard. I have two things. First and foremost, on behalf of the Boy Scout trip three nineteen, I just want to thank the board for your approval to have us have a fundraiser on your upper lot next month. We don't run on a big budget. If I told you a budget, you wouldn't believe me. And it takes a lot of cost on the families to, to have a really great program, and I think we have a really good one. So we're going to be able to have this flower sale, and we're hoping to make enough money that we can buy some new equipment and help these boys get on some really cool adventures this, this summer, so I appreciate your help with that. Second thing is, it came to my attention recently that, and I apologize if I have my date wrong, but I believe it's fall of two thousand nineteen, as of fall of two thousand nineteen, that the township has began charging our youth organizations for the use of your fields. I should say our fields. I have a problem with that as a taxpayer, I do not, I'll fully disclose, I do not represent a board member on any youth sports organization. I have three children, they are all active in athletics. I think that the township looking into using our recreational facilities as a business opportunity is fine. I don't think that it should be something, though, that is taken out of our taxes. So I kind of feel like I'm getting double dipped on. You guys are charging our youth organizations to use your field, our fields, and then in turn, we're also paying taxes. And when those fields get charged to nonprofit organizations, it's a requirement that they may have to up, up their registrations, and they really are our fields to use, and I think that that really is what the public domain for park and recreation should be for. I mean, I, I heard you all talk today about the tens of thousands of dollars that we want to spend to increase that, yet what we have in front of us, we're charging our taxpayers to use. So I would just ask you to reconsider that, on behalf of myself and other taxpayers that have the opportunity to use those fields. I would also ask that if you need help with that, if it's a maintenance issue, if it's some kind of an issue with getting those fields prepared, that you work with those organizations. Those organizations generally have equipment to handle some of those things. I know that baseball does, and if you need help with that, I think that there could at least be an open discussion. However, charging our kids to use our fields that we pay for, I just want to see that as recent, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I know some of the discussion, well, it has been around maintenance of those fields, preparing those fields for specific people for activities. So I think, you know, there could be discussion available. Do you want to comment, or? I think you can take it back and provide advice later, but I think that's been under discussion for a while, so I think, yeah, open for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Hughes.
David Hughes, two five five, this is his cell. I want to talk about old business on the agenda. I've been, I've been involved in organizations like you guys are sitting up there, and we always kept the old business on the agenda. It might be primed to see this table, table for now, or, or just a status update. But look, we have the noise organs, we haven't looked at it yet since, I don't know, last month or so. The short-term rental organs, the service electric agreement. We were going to have a town hall meeting that hasn't been rescheduled. The missing podium, the budget deficit. Now, I know these things aren't super important, but to me, they're a metaphor for the canary in the coal mine. It shows us that things are not operating smoothly. I have some issues with the golf package. The missing books and records from the Red Country Club forensic log. No one seems to want to address these issues. This is a serious matter, if financial records go missing, and yet we've just chosen to ignore it. The clarifying statement that is on the website needs to be looked at and written properly. So other than that, I have one last comment, and that is with the microphones. I mean, it's great that you got this up, but these are the phones from the other meeting room, and the old, everyone who's been here for over a year knows, if you don't speak right into it, you don't have your mouth going up to it, we can't hear you. And when you go like this, we can't hear you. And for the new supervisors, you, you, you know now that if that phone microphone is not right at your mouth, we're not going to be able to hear you. So I'm worried about the, the audio on, on the video, and also the video that you're recording, could be really compromised by this. So everyone who's been here for a while knows, you got to put your mouth right up to the microphone, okay? And you can't go like this. We can't hear you, and we want to hear what you're talking about, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And I would ask, yeah, be patient, I mean, I think, Mr. Hughes, you also got corrected a few times. To remind him to speak into the microphone. I want to thank Larry, you know, thank Clarence and his team, that each week, each week, we're trying to make improvements here. First week, we did have microphones, I'm in reality, second week, we go pass one around, so we are working on it, but thanks, and please be, please be patient. Benny? And one, one other comment that I do have, my supervisor commented, they had updates on the short-term planning, for some of the things we mentioned.
Good evening, Benny, Anthony, thirty-six oh nine, Kirkman Avenue. Congratulations Clarence to the big six dollar twenty-five cent raise. My comment was going to be for Michelle Gilbert, which unfortunately is not here, but I just wanted to thank her for all the service that she has done. And I can tell you, she has had countless hours where they were here after their, their due time. And that goes for the current employees, they really have done a lot to try and make Exeter a community. So I just wanted to thank her for the, unfortunately she's not here, but I'll try and reach out to her. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Very good supervisor, you're great. I'm here.
Yes, I'm one of the, Larry, the microphone, sorry. A second, to go to the middle. I want to commend the Exeter Fire Department and Larry, who was involved in this, I've been on social media for the Red Eagle. There was an incident, everything, I'll let you explain what happened. But I want to congratulate you, Larry, and Taddy around the fire department beyond. So Fire Department did a wonderful job, Larry did a great job, so tell the folks what you did, and on behalf of me, and I'm sure the other board members, great job, congratulations.
The fire department was doing a rescue on Saturday on the American Mountain, a guy fell off the lookout. To get there, we had to have ATV to get to the person. It's raining my house, I had lined out the fire department pass, and I said, hey, do we need this? So they said, if you want to bring it, bring it. So I rode down to the bottom of the path of thought, the fire department ropes him, because their jeep would not make it to where we had to go. And we climbed up the side of the hill, while we were bringing their side of the side from Sturmerville, where they had it located. We responded, tried to get the gentleman up over the mountain, we couldn't, he had to be down by railroad tracks. Lower houses had their recruitment there, it was too wide to fit two tracks. They called Burke County Radio, stop all trains, and my machine fit through the railroad tracks. I drove in reverse for about two miles to get to the individual, and then we brought him to his aid, and sent him to the hospital.
So Larry, great job. Just to thank you, good luck to Michelle Gilbert, she was a good asset the last couple of years, but we should have asked. Thank you, John, and Deb.
A couple of things, want to thank Michelle, Larry, and also the staff that put in some extra time. I know that sometimes we do take a grain of, but thank you very much. Thursday night, I took my fourth training class at Allbreaker, so that will be finalized. And what I'm going to do is I'm also going to talk to Paul Jansen, who has a lot of contacts, talk a little bit about the RFP, and see if I can think his brains for free. See what I can get information about the food beverage, see what we can find out from him. And then again, just a, the last reminder, tomorrow evening, six o'clock here, we will have, again, the Dairy, the Dairy Grind Shop. We'll, we'll talk about the golf course and the grounds, what they feel needs to be done, or all the, the good may be indifferent, and we'd like to talk about the plan to get to the other forces, to pick their brains, and see how they have been successful.
Thank you. Mr. Out here?
Also, I want to thank Michelle, we were in a very difficult position, and I thought she handled it very professionally, appreciate that. Unfortunately, I will not be in that training, because Mama Mia opens in Exeter High School Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Mrs. Goutier directs it, so Mr. Goutier has to be there. But they do a great job, the students are very talented, so if you're available, I'd encourage you to come. I also want to congratulate the high school, I saw that they raised over thirty thousand dollars for the Four Diamonds Fund. So it, it's nice to be part of such a county community. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle?
Into the microphone, Michelle.
I have it. I have done this evening, just like to wish everyone a good evening and a nice day tomorrow. Thank you. Till, till I can talk to the mic, through the microphone, I can.
Very good, thank you. I have a couple of things, certainly want to thank Michelle Gilbert for taking on the role, I think she learned that it was a lot more hours and a lot more work than she anticipated. I think, you know, whether it's Clarence, or Jen, or Rory, or Michelle, I mean, all weekend long, again, questions coming in. I try not to bother people, send out emails, and usually within a half an hour, I respond to back, whether it's Sunday morning or Saturday night. So appreciate that, you understand that there's a lot of responsibilities that they've taken on. A couple of other things, the ways of work is updated, that will be on the, I'm not promising, but should be on the March twenty-third agenda. It would have been on tonight's agenda, but Will Berger is out right now, he's had reviews, talked, and went, went through a lot of the stuff we discussed at the last meeting. Had some recommendations that they've come forward to the board for consideration, so that should be on the March twenty-third agenda. Short-term lodging, uh, no, sorry, I had that reversed, I was a short-term lodging, I was talking about that Will was working on. The noise ordinance, changes are under review, Chief, I was going to ask you to comment on that, but I think you have reviewed the latest noise ordinance. on that, but I think you have reviewed the latest noise ordinance, had some recommendations, and you have sent that back, and we're expecting that to come back from legal and the on the March twenty-third agenda as well. Yes, I reached out to Derek again today to try to figure out exactly where he was, so it seems like you're back. Before. Very good. So I was, noise ordinance and short-term lodging should be on the next agenda. Service electric, we are, we do have to work on scheduling that date. We'll have to follow up, as Michelle was, Gilbert was the contact, trying to get the right. It doesn't make sense to have a meeting if we can't have the law firm representing the municipality, service electric representative isn't everyone there, so it's not just our participation, we're trying to get participation from, from those agencies to do that. So that was that one. And one final one, I'll just bring it up here and try catch Derek off guard, so I'll talk about this offline. I don't know if any other board members want to make a comment, but this building, we are using this for our meetings. We continue to get requests for special functions, that people want a complicator, you know, whether it's for a funeral service or something, can they come in and use this building? There's a cost associated with that, you know, I think it's something we have to consider. It's Derek and his staff and other people that have to set up the room, tear down the rooms, you know, so we are spending money to do that, you know, do we charge a fee? What fee do we charge for that? So I would ask, you know, probably, I'll ask Derek and other board members, if they want to make comment, to just, you know, put together something, we have to respond to these requests, you know, what does it actually cost us, not just time, I mean, there's enough activity going on, these are usually weekend events that have to be participating in. But I do feel we need to respond and give the answer, rather than just saying, no, we won't consider it, and we have this facility sitting here. So I don't know if anyone else has opinion, but not Derek, I'm not asking you for an answer now, but I think we should consider that for certain events and what criteria do we use? You know, we don't want to be taking on additional costs to do this right now. So I don't know, does anyone else have a comment on that? No?
The only comment I would have is Derek was here all day Saturday, all day Sunday, he was here, he'll be going, I guess that will, twelve, thirteen days in a row, working. I think we have to take a look at other staff possibilities, and we can't just expect him to do this.
And I'm fine with that for right now, where we just, you know, I will respond to a couple queries we have now, and I will respond, and we don't have a plan in place right now, we don't have the resources to do that. It's not just unlocking the door. There is, there is commitments.
There's a lot of questions, I know a lot.
Yeah, just taking it case by case. Job, it'll be case by case, it's a whole work of that individuated.
Pathway Sac two eleven Reggie Road. There, would it be, would it be okay to consider like putting an out for volunteers to assist? I mean, especially under special circumstances. It could be that some of us would, wouldn't mind to chip in, I mean, chip in time, not for money, just like the gals and guys, the garden, you know, what you do outside. I mean, if there, I'm sure that there are people here that love this building and have connection to it, as I do, and want to keep it and help out other.
Yeah, we don't, we're not doing that. And thank you for the suggestion, apology would be great, but I mean, there are required staff to be here.
Well, and also, when I used to teach, I would make partnerships with different, different departments in the Go Tech School. One, several years, they, the cell, the O Mac Department, they repaired winter coats for me to give out to migrant workers for six, seven, eight years, you know, and reaching out to them would give some of their students experience in certain fields, and they might be able to get credit for it. I mean, there's somebody, you know, thinking a little bit outside the box.
Thank you. Thank you for the comment. And I think, I'm not sure I've mentioned already, but yeah, I just want to wish Michelle well in her new role, I think she was quite excited with the new opportunity she was moving into, so again, just want to wish, wish her well in her new endeavors, so. Other than that, take our motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Buzz. That's all I have. Thank you, everyone.